Okay, Council, I'm getting lonely up here. Let's go. We've got to start the meeting. We've got three judges in the audience. I'm sure they're not used to hearing, seeing other people be able to use one of these. All right. Everybody ready? All right. Got to use this often. Welcome to the January 2nd, 2018 City Council Meeting. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. You know, I can speak for everybody up here that it's always great to see this kind of audience. We've got a great council meeting planned for you, very historic, and a lot of new beginnings here. And so, I also want to say thank you so much for the family members of our new council members being present and the council members or the family members. That's really, and the community being here, that's really why we're all up here working in concert together. Today represents, really, the culmination of a lot of working and dreams on the part of the individuals who are standing up here. And I also want to take this opportunity to say thank you for those who really put themselves out there, for the folks maybe who did run for this and came up short and didn't actually get it, but, you know, contributed to our community with the exchange of ideas and the marketplace of ideas to, all with a common goal of making our city better. With that, it is time for some swearing ins. And what we're going to have is all be sworn in by Judge McCullough. I mentioned we had three judges in the audience. We have King County Superior Court Judge Leroy McCullough, who is present with him. Let's give Judge McCullough a big round of applause. Thank you. And we also have our two judges that will be sworn in after the council members, and those are Judge David Larson and Judge Rebecca Robertson. Your honors, thank you. So, after my swearing in, we're going to have our brand-new, one of our brand-new council members, Jesse Johnson, get sworn in by Judge McCullough. Also, Councilmember Hong Tran will, Judge McCullough is going to be doing, I believe, all of these swearing ins with the exception of the judges. Then we'll have Councilmember Martin Moore and then the two judges. After that, then we're going to go through the process of the election of our deputy mayor for the next two years, and there'll be a process for that. But without further ado, let's go ahead and let's light this candle. Let's get started. Oh, after the election of deputy mayor, everybody, we're going to have a brief recess, and we've got cake and refreshments, and we'll probably recess for about 15, 20 minutes for the celebration and time to talk to the council and especially our newest members. So with that, I will approach the podium. Oh, and I brought the deputy to the mayor. Would Benjamin Farrell please approach the podium as well? My 10-year-old son.
Let me begin by saying good evening to everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
It is indeed an honor and a privilege to come back before you, to administer the oath to some very important individuals. I do want to take some liberties just to commend the citizens and the residents of Federal Way for electing and supporting such outstanding council members and this outstanding mayor. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some information that I got from Councilmember Johnson about the beauty of Federal Way and this city council. You know that this city council is incredibly diverse. If you look up and see who's sitting there, you've got somebody under 30 in the person of Jesse Johnson. You've got a young man in the person of Martin Moore that's here for his second term. We've got outstanding immigrants that have come through and are helping to keep America strong. Our strength is in our diversity, and they are here. We celebrate them. And all of the members of the council who are poised to take this wonderful city to the next level. You know that you're no longer a bedroom community. You are approaching 100,000 people in population, and even though I live in another city in King County, I think we have to keep our eyes on Federal Way because you are poised, again, for greatness. With that, then, it is my pleasure to administer this oath to the mayor of this great city. And Benjamin, thank you for standing in, standing there with your father. If you'll raise your hand, please. This is the oath. I state your name.
I, James Allen Farrell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of these United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way, Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of Federal Way, Washington.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
In and for the great city of Federal Way.
In and for the great city of Federal Way.
King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
And such duties.
And such duties.
As are prescribed by law.
As are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You can celebrate him as he comes. This is the youth and truth candidate. All right, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Jesse Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the great city.
The great city.
Of Federal Way, Washington.
Of Federal Way, Washington.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office.
The office.
Of city of Federal Way.
Of city of Federal Way.
Council position number two.
Position number two.
In and for.
In and for.
The city of Federal Way.
The city of Federal Way.
King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
And such duties.
And such duties.
As are prescribed by law.
As are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. What a privilege, what a privilege. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Wong Tran.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And the laws.
And the laws.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the great city.
Of the great city.
Of Federal Way, Washington.
Of Federal Way, Washington.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my judgments.
To the best of my judgments.
Skill.
Skill.
And ability.
And ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of city of Federal Way.
City of Federal Way.
Council position number four.
Council position number four.
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington.
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington.
And.
And.
Such duties as are prescribed.
Such duties.
By law.
By law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you so much, Your Honor. I wanted to say a few words before I take my oath. I want to first acknowledge my wife that's in the audience, Ms. Sarah Moore.
Mrs.
Misses. And my parents, Dr. Moore and Sylvia, who've flown in from Arizona that are here to join me.
Where are your parents? Okay, all right, all right.
They're the ones that took that shot and took that chance, rather, and adopted me nearly 20-plus years ago, and for that, I am forever grateful to them, or else I wouldn't be here. And that's, so thank you so much, Mom and Dad, I appreciate it. Also, you can't, I wanted to acknowledge my in-laws, Cindy and Chris Anderson. They're, there's just a lot of laughter in the house. We'll just leave it at that, but I appreciate all of your support. And my cousins, Matt and Shayla and Aiden and Kenley are here. They're, perhaps will join me here as we take the oath as well. But to the community in Federal Way, thank you so much. Thank you for entrusting me to be your advocate to serve, and the promise that I will make, the commitment I will make to each and every single one of you, is that I will work hard, I will listen, and I will work towards creating solutions for the many opportunities that lie ahead and the challenges that lie ahead of us as well. And I'm looking forward to working together to make that happen. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Come on down. As he's coming, I do see the signs that were brought. Can I see those signs again? What do they say? "We want it more and we've got more."
Martin, those would have been great yard signs.
I am so privileged because Jesse and Lydia, Martin, these are all, they're mentees of mine, and I just, I am so proud of each and every one of them. So if you will raise your right hand, please, Martin, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Martin Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen.
That I am a citizen.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And the laws.
And the laws.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the great city.
Of the great city.
Of Federal Way, Washington.
Of Federal Way, Washington.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of city of Federal Way.
Of the city of Federal Way.
Council position number six.
Council position number six.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
And perform such duties.
And perform such duties.
As are prescribed by law.
As are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And before the judges then come up, let me thank you, Ms. Stephanie Courtney, for your assistance in organizing this and getting the materials to me. So congratulations to all of you. We are looking forward to some great things from each and every one of you. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then give them a round of applause, that's encouragement. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, Your Honor, thank you for blessing us with your presence, and let's give Judge McCullough a big round of applause. Thank you, Judge. We're so fortunate to have you, have you join us. Thank you. All right, Your Honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's an honor, a privilege to be here again, to be sworn under oath, and Judge Robertson and I talked to each other about who would be ideal to swear us in. Now Judge McCullough is, would be excellent because he would be very inspiring and everything, but we thought, why not swear each other in? Because it's, it's something that is hopefully a symbol of where we've, where we've come as a community, as a court, the kind of unity, and I always talk about the magic of respect and dignity, and it starts with us, and the fact that we respect each other so much that we'd want each other to swear each other in. I hope you see is something that is very wonderful for this community. And, and so we're going to start by having me swear in Judge Robertson, and then she'll swear me in. So, so raise your right hand. I, Rebecca Robertson.
I, Rebecca Robertson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
And I will support the Constitution and laws.
And I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way.
Washington.
Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
And impartially perform the duties.
And impartially perform the duties.
Of the office of municipal court judge.
Of the office of municipal court judge.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
Good, congratulations.
I state your name.
I state, I, David Larson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Federal Way, Washington.
Of the city of Federal Way, Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of municipal court judge.
Of the office of municipal court judge.
In and for the city of Federal Way, King County. In and for the city of Federal Way. City of Federal Way, King County, Washington.
In and for the city of Federal Way, King County, Washington. Maybe you remember.
Your Honors, Judge Larson made reference to this, but our municipal court has come a great distance in just a few short years, and it's thanks to your service. Thank you so much for the stability and the servant leadership you bring to the court. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Now, before we move on to the next item, you know, I think everybody up here is the beneficiary of the family, as I mentioned before, their family that stood with them, stood beside them, helped them, navigated sometimes the waters of the political process to get here. And I had my son, Benjamin Farrell, get up and be next to me, but I did want to acknowledge my wife, Wendy, in the front row. Would you wave? Wendy, thank you so much for everything. We're all so fortunate to have the support and love of those people close to us that help us do this job on your behalf. All right, now, speaking about jobs, we've got an election for the deputy mayor for the next two years, for 2018 and 19. I'll go ahead and outline that process and then open up for nominations. This will be essentially for the leader of the council or the deputy mayor. So the rules, I'll go ahead and just want to make sure the process is clear to everybody. Our rules provide for the following in regard to the election of the deputy mayor. Any council member may nominate a candidate. No second is needed. Number two, nominations are closed by a motion, second, and two-thirds vote of council. On our council of seven, that's five people. Number three, if only one nomination is made, it is appropriate to make a motion and obtain a second to instruct the city clerk to cast unanimous ballot for that nomination, approval by a majority vote of council members present, that before. If more than one nomination is made, an open election is conducted by roll call vote. Prior to closing nominations and calling for a vote, there will be an opportunity for discussion among the council members. To be elected, the nominee needs a majority vote of the council, and as I said, that's four votes. Elections will continue until a deputy mayor is elected by a majority vote of the council. The mayor shall declare the nominee receiving the majority vote as the new deputy mayor. The clerk shall swear the deputy mayor into office. So we will go ahead and start this process. At this point, I will open the floor for nominations for deputy mayor.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Susan Honda.
Was she recognized?
Yeah, he just looked at me.
She wasn't recognized.
Councilmember Honda, Councilmember DuKlo.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Susan Honda for deputy mayor.
Okay, Susan Honda is nominated. Councilmember Martin Moore?
I'd like to nominate Lydia Safadawson for deputy mayor.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, and prior to a motion for closing, are there any, is there any discussion regarding the nominations? Okay, hearing then, is there a vote, is there a motion to close nominations?
A move to close the nominations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion regarding closing the nominations? All those in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. All right, now, having two nominations, we will go, and I want to make sure it's clear, we're going to have an election, and as we go down, the clerk will call each council member in order, and they will say which of the two nominees they wish to vote for. All right, any other explanation necessary? Council, is there any, okay, Stephanie, would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Safadawson.
Myself, Lydia.
Councilmember Johnson.
Susan Honda.
Councilmember Honda.
Susan Honda.
Councilmember Tran.
Susan.
Councilmember Copeng.
Lydia Safadawson.
Councilmember Moore.
Lydia Safadawson.
Councilmember DuKlo.
Susan Honda.
Councilmember Safadawson receives three votes. Councilmember Honda receives four votes. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States. And the State of Washington. That I will support the Constitution and laws. Of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington. And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way, Washington. And will, to the best of my judgment. Skill and ability. Truly, faithfully. Diligently and impartially. Perform the duties of the office of deputy mayor. In and for the city of Federal Way. King County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law, so help me God.
All right, with that, we are in brief recess for the, uh, for the, um, reception. We'll convene in about fifteen minutes.
Did she guess the right one? She had that one ready. That was a surprise to me. You wanna help? I am. Judge.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started again.
I see you up at Ilahi when I'm picking my daughter up.
Oh, hi.
I'm Cindy Anderson.
Oh, hi.
Who's in your neighborhood?
Oh, great, great.
I think he rides the bus.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah, at Ilahi.
At Ilahi, yeah, she's an eight grade.
Oh, very good, yeah, isn't Ilahi great?
You know, he really is.
Yeah.
Very close.
Yeah, me too, me too, and I love dropping him off every day. We were taking the bus, but...
We need to go through the little lodge.
Let's go, you guys. Okay, all right. And you've got your proclamations? Okay, very good. Okay, great. All right. Order in the council chambers. Um, all right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Congratulations to everyone, thank you again for coming, uh, we've got some business to do. Uh, the next is item C on the agenda, proclamation, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Brenda Oliver of the Federal Way Coalition Against Trafficking to come to the podium for the presentation of the proclamation for National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And whoever she wants to bring with her. Whereas, human trafficking is a modern-day slavery and involves the use of force, fraud, or corrosion to exploit a person for involuntary servitude, labor, and commercial sex acts. And whereas trafficking victims can be men or women, boys or girls, US citizens or foreign nationals. And whereas, the average age a girl enters the commercial trafficking trade is 12 to 14 years old, while for boys it's 11 to 13 years of age. And whereas, each year as many as 100,000 to 300,000 American children are at risk of being trafficked in the United States. And whereas, traffickers may target young victims through social media websites, telephone chatlines, shopping malls, and after-school programs. And whereas, after drug dealing, human trafficking is tied with the illegal arms industry as the second-largest criminal industry in the world today and the fastest-growing. And now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council of the City of Federal Way, to hereby proclaim January 2018 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Federal Way. And we call upon the people of the city to support this observance by helping to educate residents about human trafficking in our city as well as across America and around the world. Signed, this second day of January 2018.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Honda and City Council. We'd like to thank you again for this proclamation. I think this is about the sixth or seventh year that you've been doing this, and we really appreciate your assistance in bringing awareness to this issue. That being said, I also want to express that I think it's time, as Judge McCullough said, to start changing words into action. I think we need more action, and that's the entire city. So, I think the next steps might be a resolution by the council. We would like to see a strategic plan, also, on how to combat this issue. I feel like, for me, as many of you know, my daughter is missing and is believed to be a victim of trafficking. We just had the 10th anniversary of her missing, so I think I'm feeling a little more emboldened and impassioned about this, that we've got to really start getting on the ball and preventing trafficking from happening here in our city. I know that our forum, which is next Wednesday, the 10th, right here in the City Hall, is on businesses and how businesses can become involved, and I know everybody here, if you don't own a business, you work in a business, and businesses are key. Businesses are key to identifying victims, and they're key to working to bring it more out into the open and reporting, preventing trafficking. So, I encourage everybody here to join us right here at City Hall next Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:30. And again, I want to thank the council. All of you have participated in our events and become very involved, I appreciate that. I'd like to extend that invitation also to the new council members. Councilmember Johnson and I have had some conversations already, I know that he's interested in this, and I'm going to assume that Councilmember Tran, coming from DSHS, and I know that some of your clientele is affected by this. So, I invite you to get to know us better and to see what can be done. Also, I think during our forum on the 10th, we'll have some exciting news to share with you as well from our end, so, thank you again, and we'll see you all here on the 10th.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is National Mentoring Month, January 2018, Deputy Mayor.
I'm gonna have Councilmember Safadovson read that.
Proclamation, National Mentoring Month, January 2018. I would like to invite Executive Director Tracy Oster and Program Manager Jennifer Youngblood of Communities and Schools to come to the podium for the presentation of the proclamation for National Mentoring Month. Whereas, the future of Federal Way rests on the shoulders of our youth, and whereas, educated, confident, and nurtured children will give rise to a stronger city, and whereas, mentoring matches a child with a caring, responsible adult to build confidence, stability, and to provide guidance and direction, and whereas, research shows that mentoring has a beneficial and long-term impact on young people by increasing attendance at school, improving rates of high school graduation, and decreasing involvement with drugs, alcohol, and violent behavior, and whereas, January has been designated as National Mentoring Month, calling on adults across America to become involved with mentoring programs. Now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2018 as Mentoring Month in the City of Federal Way, and urge all residents to recognize the importance of mentoring and to look for opportunities to serve as mentors in their communities. Signed, the second day of January 2018.
If you guys wanna see someone, I'm trying to...
Thank you, Councilmember Safadovson. Thank you, other council members, welcome to the new council members, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Honda and Mayor Farrell. We appreciate, again, once again, another proclamation for National Mentoring Month and an opportunity to honor the folks that are doing this work in our community, and also to continue to highlight the need that we have in this community. For communities and schools, we've been running our mentoring program for, this is our 11th year, so, we serve about 100 kids a year that are matched with a caring adult mentor. They meet one hour, one day a week. Over the years, we've served about 600 kids total in the program, and we see the difference it makes, it makes a difference. Kids that are mentored are more likely to go to school, to show up at school, to get better grades, to stay in school, and to graduate. But we continue to need mentors in this community and for our youth. We know that when young people are connected to a caring adult, it makes us a better community. And I'd like to thank the council for adopting the recommendations from the Violence Prevention Coalition, one of which is a recommendation to increase the number of mentors that we have in our community, and I look forward to meeting with you and talking to you about how we can do this together with our community. I've talked to some of you individually, and I know that this is an important issue to each and every one of you, and it's an important issue in our community. If you're currently a mentor, whether it's with communities and schools, or the school district, or, I saw Lewis out there, if he's still there, his organization, thank you for that work, it's so important. If you're not, get connected, there's lots of opportunities in this community, and it makes a difference, so, thank you.
Okay, certificate of appointment, the Steel Lake Management District Advisory Committee, Councilmember Copeng.
I would like to invite Ainsley Yoshizumi and Karina Mamoril to come forward to accept a certificate of appointment to the Youth Commission. I would also like to recognize Aiden Bayne, who has been appointed to the Youth Commission but was unable to attend tonight's meeting.
Um, I actually would like to speak for a bit, if that's all right?
Of course.
Hi, so, I'm Karina Mamoril, and I'm really thankful for this opportunity. I would like to thank the Federal Way council members for nominating me for this position, and I'm glad to be able to work for the City of Federal Way as a teenager and work with other students and other young children, you know, teenagers who wanna make this city a better place, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, mayor's emerging issues, the first is at the last...
Steel Lake Management District.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steel Lake Management District Advisory Committee, Councilmember Copeng.
With my mic on, I would like to invite Margaret Raymer and John Pearson to come forward to accept a certificate of appointment to the Steel Lake Management District. I would also like to recognize Tom DeZuder and Mark Sable, who have also been appointed but were unable to attend tonight's meeting.
I'd like to thank the city council and the great staff that you have that have really supported the Steel Lake Management District all these years. The City of Federal Way has a wonderful park on the lake, and because of your support, we've been able to keep the lake healthy and in great shape for all the citizens of Federal Way to enjoy, so, thank you very, very much.
Okay, actually, before we do another item, we have, we're fortunate to have our former colleague, former deputy mayor and mayor, Jean Burbage, in the back of the room. Jean, thank you for being here. We also have our state representatives, Mike Policiati and Christina Reeves, present in the room, at least they were earlier, thank you very much for having me be here. And we have a former council member, former mayor, and former state representative Linda Coachmar here as well. Okay, um, let's see here, now, now we get to talk about mayor's emerging issues. As promised at the last meeting, we were gonna talk about the IRG, the former, the property formerly known as Warehouser, the IRG Building Permit Application Review Process, and we've got our community, Community Development Director Brian Davis to explain that process. There are a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts here, and so, I think, I would just wanna make sure that the public is aware, there were some questions at the last council meeting, and one of the things that we, that I really like to do is make sure that we follow up as soon as possible and present this process. With that, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda, and city council members. As the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, there were some questions that were raised by audience members about the process that is proposed for the latest application on the IRG property for the business park by the tech center, so I'm gonna answer those questions, but before doing so, just to give some context for what we're talking about. This is the property, this is the former Warehouser, now IRG property, this is I-5, this is Highway 18 with the interchange of Warehouser Way. This right here is the headquarters building, next to the Meadow. Up north is the Technology Center, these are both existing structures on the campus. Down below at the southwest corner is the Rodent Garden and Bonsai, Pacific Bonsai Museum. And at this southeast corner of the property, there is a, there are two proposals in for two warehouses, they're calling them Warehouse A and Warehouse B, each of just over 200,000 square feet. Warehouse A came in last summer, Warehouse B came in this summer, and then up, what we'll be talking about in a minute, is the application number five, which is the, or the item number five on this map, excuse me, is the Green Line Business Park. So, we received this application just before Thanksgiving, it was an application, they're calling it the Green Line Business Park, this is for three buildings, just over a million square feet combined for these three buildings by the Technology Center, and the application for Mastered Leadership application is requested to be under process four. loop road and the parking that they currently have, and the building that is proposed to go at that north end. And then to the south of the building, south of the Tech Center, here are these, again, closer up, Building B and Building C. So that's, we're talking about these three buildings is what is the process for. And so, I think it was you, Deborah, that could give the questions last time. Deborah Hanson brought up some questions. Is there a public comment period for this application? If so, when does it begin and close? There is a comment period for this application. There's actually a number of comment periods for this application. It's after we've determined that the application is complete, there's a 14-day, or, excuse me, within 14 days of staff deeming it complete, then there's a notice of application. Recently, if citizens have noticed near that south end of the property, there were signs up recently. That was for Warehouse B. Again, that's one of the warehouses at the south end of the property. There was, I think there was a big yellow sign that said notice of application, in which you had opportunity to comment on that application. So similarly, if we were to deem this, this three-building application complete, a similar sign would go up at the north end by the Tech Center saying notice of application, and it's, you're welcome to comment on any concerns that you have of the application.[685.19][685.19][laughter] We need to trade heights, Suzanne. Okay. Okay. Question number two, is there a public hearing, and what is the date? Who can speak at the hearing, and for how long? So there, under process four, there is a public hearing. It is a, the hearing is conducted by a hearing examiner. It's actually in this room where we conduct them at City Hall. The hearing examiner sits where Councilor Asafa Dawson sits, and there's a clerk to his right, and there's a presentation made by staff, presentation made by the applicant, and then there's comments by anyone else who wants to comment on the application. And then the hearing examiner will, let's see, I'm getting ahead of myself. So that answers that question, yes. There is a public hearing. We don't have a date yet, because, again, we've, we just barely took in this application. Haven't deemed it complete yet. But once there is a date set, you, the citizens would be notified through the normal process. So, when will the hearing examiner make a decision? What's the process of notification of the decision? So usually, unless there's an agreement by the parties, the hearing examiner will make a decision within 10 days after the hearing. That decision is mailed by the city to the applicant, to anyone who submitted written or oral testimony during the proceedings, or any person who has specifically requested. So whether or not they came to the meeting or not, they just requested that they be notified of the decision. They'll receive the decision by the hearing examiner, and then finally, a decision is mailed to the assessor. Who can appeal the hearing examiner's decision? What is the cost, and where is appeal submitted? So once it, once it gets, once the hearing examiner makes a decision, that he is the impartial, third-party decision-maker for the city, and once that's done, that's the final decision of the city. So once that's done, if someone wants to appeal it, which they can, the answer to the question is, anyone can appeal it who has previously established themselves as a party of record. They can appeal it to Superior Court. But the city's action with the hearing examiner's decision is final, and so any appeals then go to Superior Court. And what that process is, we don't, it just depends on whichever court it goes to, and so we would recommend if we get to the point where we actually have a hearing on this application, and there are some parties of record who want to appeal it, we would advise you to contact Superior Court about what that process is, because that's not something that we, the city, administer. And then finally, what other information is helpful to the public to be engaged in the decision? There's multiple opportunities to comment on this and all the other applications as well. This particular one, again, we haven't deemed complete, so there really isn't anything to comment on yet, although we certainly welcome anyone who wants to come and comment at city council meetings, or email us about any questions that you have of the application, because we have put all the information online for you to review. We welcome those. But for getting comments into the record of any type of decision that the city may make, that official notice comment period is not yet open. But like I said, staff is more than happy to answer any questions if there's confusion about what's been submitted or what the process is. So, a little bit of confusion that we caused, for which we apologize. On our website, there's a handout that you can download, and it explains, or used to explain, what I'm, I just explained to you today, this evening. It used to be that appeals of this hearing examiner used to go to the city council. In 2015, that was amended in the code to allow the city council to freely communicate with citizens. When the city council has to potentially act as a, in a quasi-judicial manner, meaning that they may end up being, making a decision if, you know, if they hear an appeal, then they need to be completely impartial in the matter and not have any communication, and that somewhat limits your ability to talk to your constituents. So in 2015, that was changed so that there could be more free communication between constituents. So that, it does not appeal to the city council any longer, and so these, these other bits of information on the handout no longer apply. The effective date of the decision by the hearing examiner begins that appeal period, but it, appeal is directly to Superior Court, as I mentioned earlier, and then that leads to the completion of the land use process. I believe that is it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Duclou.
Just want to be clear. Now, what we're talking about here that they're wanting to put on, these are warehouses?
At this point, it's just an application for three buildings. We don't have a specified use at this point. That's part, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. When they put the application in, then will we know?
Well, the application isn't. It just says buildings, and so we're communicating with them to identify, is it office space or what? Because that, that then determines what the type of traffic that it generates.
Right.
And, and so we're communicating with them on that. Right? They haven't called these, these ones up north warehouses. They're labeling them as buildings. So that's where we are on that.
But we will find out then, as the process goes on.
Yeah, we will, we'll get to a decision. We'll be able to get to a decision based on an agreed-upon use, and I believe for this one, it is office space. But again, that's something that we'll talk to them to confirm before we then run the analysis of traffic and other things that would be, result from the type of use that it is.
When you confirm that, will people be able to find out?
Yes, we, when we issue the, the decision, it will be based on whatever use is agreed upon. Again, we haven't really deemed it, we haven't looked to see if it's complete yet, so we haven't really got into that far details. They probably have indicated on the application. I'm just talking up here, not knowing what, what the specific use is. But once we deem it complete, we'll have all that information available for anyone to inquire about.
All right. Council, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Brian. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Copeng?
No problem. Brian, I just wanted to clarify one point. On question one, you said, is there a public comment period for this application? If so, when does it begin and close? You stated that when you deem the application to be acceptable. I think it's more accurate to say if the application is deemed acceptable.
Sure.
Okay, there's no certainty to an outcome at this point.
No.
It's still a question.
That's a good point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I think that's, there's people that are very, very carefully listening to every word you say.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
If, if an application is deemed complete, that's correct. Thank you for that correction.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. At the next city council meeting on the 16th of this month, I'll be providing the key to the city, or honoring our former deputy mayor and councilman, Jean Burbage, with the key to the city. Would love to have as many folks there as possible to honor her 20 years of service to the city in her various roles. Also, we've got a Martin Luther King Jr. event. We've got our community service manager, Jeff Watson, here to talk about that on the 15th.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. Before I speak to Martin Luther King event, I would like to congratulate our new members of council and congratulate our new deputy mayor. I'm pleased to speak with you this evening about the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration for 2018. The celebration really takes place over the weekend of January 15th, 16th, and Monday, the 17th. It begins with a community food drive that takes place from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 13th of January, excuse me, and that will take place at Fred Meyer, at the grocery outlet, and at Walmart stores in town. A big community event that, I'm afraid I got the dates wrong. It was the 13th, 14th, and 15th of January, pardon me. The community event that takes place on Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebrated birthday is from 11:00 until 12:30, and that's going to take place at the city's Performing Arts and Events Center. It will be, it will include speakers, including Mayor Farrell, Councilmember Johnson, Aaron Jones, and Superintendent Tammy Campbell. This is a partnership of the Diversity Commission, the city's Diversity Commission, and the School District, and we're working with the Federal Way High School Black Students Union to put this event together, and I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Just, could you give the date again?
The, the date, please forgive me for getting the dates wrong. The food drive is on Saturday, the 13th of January, and the community event at the Performing Arts and Events Center is on Monday, the 15th of January.
It starts at what time again?
And it starts at, the food drive starts at 10:00 o'clock and goes till 2:00. The community event starts at 11:00 and goes until 12:30.
Right, okay. Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. If, if anyone wants to sign up to help with the food drive, who would they contact?
They would contact Jerry Lynn Clark in the council office.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to have John Hutton come up and talk about cold weather sheltering at the Federway Community Center. Before he does that, though, I want to point out the picture that we have as our screensaver this evening, and that's Town Square Park and our beautiful tree. And John, how many, how many thousands of lights were put on that tree?
27,000 LED light bulbs. Individual LED light bulbs are on that tree. Took a lot of work, and we're incredibly proud of it. They did a great job.
I saw them, working to take them off. Maybe in a couple of weeks, they'll have them all off.
Hopefully, they go down a little quicker than they went up.
I can attest to that fact, because I go up there every Wednesday and do a mile or a mile and a half walking, and for four weeks, they were there, putting them on, one by one by one.
That's right, that's right. Okay, all right. John, let's talk about the cold weather sheltering we're doing at the community center, and then I'm going to have Yarden Weidenfeld get up and update us on a recent development with the HMCI. John?
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and members of council. We are here to very briefly talk about the Federway Community Center and its potential use for as a warming center. We also use it as a cooling center in the summer months when we get extreme weather conditions. And so if weather conditions are determined to cause a threat to potential, potential threat to life, Federway Community Center may be used as a warming shelter. And the criteria for it becoming a warming shelter, the conditions for opening a warming center include forecasted and/or sustained temperatures below freezing with some form of precipitation, snow, or rain, and some event that has potential to dislocate people. We've had this happen with a large fire in an apartment complex a few years ago, and a long-lasting power outage that affected a neighborhood for several days. The warming center is not meant to be an overnight shelter, but I want to let people know that even when we're not officially open as a warming center, we welcome you to come in, grab a cup of coffee, get out of the, out of the cold if, if you need to. The public areas are open to, to the public at all times, and so that would be the lobby area and where the pool tables are, right near the front entrance. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Council, are there any questions? Thank you, John. And we'll make sure that we issue a press release when we, when we do open that up.
Absolutely.
And can you go over, under what circumstances would we open up the community center to the, you know, for overnight shelter? What, what circumstances are needed for that kind of emergency shelter?
For an overnight shelter, the Red Cross actually determines that there's a, there's an absolute need for an emergency overnight shelter. We have done that in the case of the power outage that lasted a few years ago. I believe it was a Marine Hills neighborhood. And then we had a large apartment fire that displaced several families, and they, some of those folks were able to take advantage of that, and we were able to help. So, that's when we would do that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we had a recent development. Exactly a year ago, I formed the Homeless Mothers and Children Initiative, of which I asked now Deputy Mayor Honda to co-chair along with citizen activist Sherry Edwards to co-chair that HMCI effort. They've been working very hard for the past year. In fact, they've got a meeting tomorrow. But we actually have a recent development in regard to New Hope Church, and we've been looking for different shelter opportunities. We actually had about 50 members of the public, actually in this very room, at a luncheon for HMCI, in which we brought in the faith-based community and certain organizations in town to really bring the community together, to find ways to, to shelter our most vulnerable adults. There really is a hole in services, or a gap in services, that is not addressed in our community with homeless mothers and children. Yarden, Yarden Weidenfeld, our senior policy advisor, can you tell us what the most recent development is?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, and, and members of council. So as the mayor mentioned, we had a luncheon here with about 50 people representing faith-based groups in Federal Way, and seeking partners with the city to work on the most immediate concern, having sheltering for families with children, because Federal Way does have emergency shelters in the winter for single men and women, but not for families with children. After that, that luncheon, we had compiled a list of faith-based leaders that attended and those that did not attend, over 200 people, and sent out a email. I sent out one, and then the mayor himself sent out an email to all those people, seeking sort of an inventory of what everyone is able to do, and whether there were churches that would be able and willing to actually house a shelter for the winter. One of the churches that we were in discussion with, that I know in the past year has, just, we were in discussion with as well, was New Hope Christian Church, which the pastor is Rick Miller. They see it as their mission, really, primary mission, to help people in need, particularly homeless people. And I know that Deputy Mayor Honda, as well as Sherry Edwards, had talked to them to some extent last year, and there were a few snags that we ran into. But in follow-up to this email, Pastor, we renewed our contacts with Pastor Miller, and they, they actually run an emergency shelter typically for single men and women when there's going to be below freezing weather for three days in a row, or if there's snow, or ice, or particularly bad weather. After we had some discussion with them, and the community services manager, Jeff Watson, was involved along with Sarah Bridgman from that department as well, and, and HMCI leaders, the, we asked basically Pastor Miller what it would take for him to be able to run out of his church, not just what he has been doing anyway, which is an emergency cold weather shelter for singles, but a shelter through the winter, through the end of March, for families with children every day for the winter, through the end of March. And we basically came up with several things that he would need. First of all, there's some administrative issues that we have to work out with contracting that we're still in discussions on. Secondly, he said that he would need volunteers. The, they don't have sprinklers there, so they're, by law, they're required to have fire watches, which requires for each, for each, they have three potential places where shelters could be. For each one, they would need four volunteers per night. So, we said that we would reach out to our comprehensive list, and many, many of the faith-based leaders said that they were interested in helping, and this is a way they could help. I will be sending out an email. freezing weather, weather for three days in a row, or if there's snow or ice or, or particularly bad weather. After we had some discussion with them and the community services manager, Jeff Watson, was involved along with Sarah Bridgford from that department as well, and, and HMCI leaders, the, the, we asked basically Pastor Miller what it would take for him to be able to run out of his church, not just what he has been doing anyway, which is an emergency cold weather shelter for singles, but a shelter through the winter, through the end of March, for families with children every day for the winter through the end of March. And we basically came up with several things that he would need. First of all, there's some administrative issues that we have to work out with contracting that we're still in discussions on. Secondly, he said that he would need volunteers. The, they don't have sprinklers there, so thereby law, they're required to have fire watches, which requires for each, for each, they have three potential places where shelters could be. For each one, they would need four, four volunteers per night. So we said that we would reach out to our comprehensive list, and many, many of the faith-based leaders said that they were interested in helping, and this is a way they could help. I will be sending out an email to them and recruiting volunteers, although he mentioned to me that at this point, he has had some additional staff that at least can get it started. Thirdly, they need to have some funding to reimburse them for the additional utilities they need, for food and for supplies like cots and blankets. And after we talked some numbers, it appears that with a amount of $15,000 that he could get this going for the rest of the winter, starting in mid-January through the end of March, and Mayor Farrell did authorize that as part of his discretionary budget, the $15,000. So with that, I had a conversation with Pastor Miller on Friday, right before New Year's, and he, with that commitment from the mayor, of that amount, that he believes he can get a daily shelter for families with children up and running by mid-January through the end of March.
All right, congratulations. Great job. Thank you, Yarden. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. Yarden, I just want to say thank you for your, all your hard work. I know you've done a lot of, lot of effort behind this and a lot of research and conversations. I appreciate that, and also do want to recognize Sherry Edwards. I know, in talking with her, she's doing a lot of work behind the scenes as well. I understand you, you guys took some field trips out to Mary's Place, three locations, is that right?
Earlier this year, we, we did take, HMCI actually was given the opportunity, and various members of the mayor's Homeless Mothers and Children Initiative did tour various Mary's Place facilities in Seattle. And, and that is something that we have viewed as a, as potentially a long-term solution to this, to having a permanent shelter for families with children in Federway. But as we got closer to the winter, realized that that was not going to happen immediately for this winter, and that's why we started looking for a temporary emergency sort of solution through, through a church. But we're still in discussions, and actually, the shelter developer for Mary's Place, Liz McDaniel, is that correct? I think is the, thank you, Deputy Mayor, noting that I was right about that, if you could quite remember. She's a member of HMCI, and she's interested in working with, with us as, and is actually comes to our regularly meetings. I think she'll be there tomorrow, actually. So we're still actively engaged in that, but that's more long-term.
And you said that the members, members that attended that were staff?
I'm trying to remember. I, I went on tour, Sherry did. I think Jeff Watson went on a tour, if I remember correctly, and Sarah Bridgford. I think Deputy Mayor Honda may have it, I believe, and, and I don't quite remember. There were several that had signed up for it. I don't quite remember every single person that went, but it definitely was offered to all the HMCI members.
Yeah, I'd be curious to find out who attended that trip. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you, Yarden.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to have Marwan Salum, our Public Works Director, come up. We have a big thanks to give to the Public Works crews that were working during the snow. We had, as many of you know, as we all know, we had a snow event on Christmas Eve. We had a white Christmas, and that was a great thing. But there were people that were, that were, needed to go to work and needed to be moved around, and I just wanted to, you know, I have Marwan up, and I want to give him an opportunity to speak and, and about the numbers of the crews. But at about 5:00, anybody who knows me about this knows that once the first flake of snow drops, I'm on the phone with Marwan, and, and I'm like, "Marwan, are the crews ready?" Because I really do believe it's, it's our number-one priority to make sure the roads are clear and safe, and get the, the, the sand and the de-icing and, and be ready. And our Public Works crew and Marwan, your team has never failed us, and I just want to let you know, they worked all night on Christmas Eve night to make sure that our streets were clear and dry and ready for people and safe. And Marwan, thank you. I got a, I got a text on Christmas morning, and I, I'm reading, and I'm like, "Oh, gosh, do I feel guilty," because I was reading about these guys that were working all night. Marwan, can you tell us about that?
First of all, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and, and council, and congratulation to all of the newly elected officials. Yes, we did have a white Christmas, and it's been a while. The last time we had a white Christmas was 2013. But on Christmas Eve, approximately 5:00, I get a call from the police department that the snow is coming down and sticking to the ground, and shortly thereafter, the mayor gave me a call, and he would like to know exactly what our action plan is. And as we are discussing it, the surprising part that all of a sudden, it gave me the impression I'm talking to somebody who been there, who know exactly what need to be done. We are talking about snow that cannot be plowed, but it's a moisture on the road, and the temperature is diving, and therefore, we're going to have some ice, and his recommendation to go ahead and deploy as soon as possible. And it's a very interesting feeling, because that's what we normally discuss with my deputy and with the supervisor, and here we have our mayor after four-year on the job, know exactly how to deal and handle snow and ice. But what we did is a decision by the mayor to go ahead and deploy as soon as possible. We were able to get four trucks on the road, and by 6:00, we were ready to deploy and start plowing if needed, or apply salt and sand as appropriate. We had a supervisor managing that operation, and we had him also helping loading the truck as they emptied and came back to the shop. Shortly thereafter, one of our deputy public work director, Desiree Winkler, finished church, and as she was coming out of church, she noticed that there's snow on the road, and that mean that take the family home and come back to work, and she came back, and she was able to assess the situation and determine how long we need to keep the guys. Again, as the mayor highlighted, we are talking about Christmas Eve and Christmas morning coming. But the decision was, we may need the resource all night long, and we decided to go ahead and have them work for 12-hour shift all the way till 6:00 in the morning. We scheduled some other staff to come in early in the morning to continue that operation, and we were able to send them home around 2:00 in the afternoon. But now you have moisture on the road, again, the temperature was rising, and we're okay, we don't have the icy condition, but on the 26th, we ended up putting some people on standby, and they were deployed around midnight, and they worked till noon the second day, doing the same thing, applying salt and sand. But as the mayor highlighted and indicated, that we do have a dedicated staff. They were able to come in and do what need to be done to make sure the community is safe, and our appreciation, great appreciation to them and their dedication. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
This, this happened to me several years ago. I was up at a meeting at Sea-Tac Airport, and during the meeting, I was watching snow start to fall, and finally, I left the meeting after about an hour, and I got out on I-5, and the, the traffic was terrible because it wasn't plowed, we didn't know where the lanes were, so we had like people merging into one thing, going down I-5. It took me about two hours to get from the airport to our exit at 320th, and I'm going, "Oh, God, we got hills in Federway." And I got off onto 320th, and it was clear as a bell, and I drove it all the way down at 21st and down to 21st, and it wasn't until I pulled into my own neighborhood that I got stuck. And I was so thankful. The city has been very, very responsive in terms of keeping our roads open and clear. I want to thank you and all the members, past and present, that have, that have done that.
Thank you. Councilor Kopecky?
I also want to thank the Public Works team. I had the pleasure of being escorted along 312th by, by Steel Lake, by one of the Sanders. Now, I also understand that we, we approved a new warehouse, or a new...
Oh, salt storage facility, yes.
So, and that, that will be coming online, what, early next year?
We are hoping that the material, I mean, the cover have been ordered. As soon as we receive it, we'll be able to install it, and hopefully, we'll be able to use it this winter if we can.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mayor, one, one point I would like to highlight, even though the public work take the lead, but the snow and ice team is a combination of public work and park, and some of the team member on this project, actually, Christmas Eve, was one person from park who was helping in that operation. So, ad libi to all of the park staff, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Great work. Okay, upcoming events. We've got the legislative, we've got the legislative breakfast this Thursday, January 4th, Federway Community Center at 8:00 a.m., and it's going to be, again, over at the, over at the community center, over at the seniors lounge, and that's an opportunity. We're going to have our three legislators there, and also our city council, and it's open to the public, and we're going to be, and also make, we've invited members of the, of the local governments, the school district in Lake Haven, and the fire district. We want to make sure that we're working together as a community, and also making sure that we speak for one voice when we're down in Olympia. And so this is really an opportunity for us to sit down with our state representatives, State Representative Paliciati and Reeves, and our state Senator Malosha, to really talk about our, our hopes, and we actually previously, the council previously unanimously passed a legislative agenda. That agenda should be available online, but if you'd like to come and, and talk with your city council and, and also your state legislators, that'd be great as well. Again, two days from now, on Thursday, over at the community center. Then, actually, we've got a little bit of, some history in the making. The State of the City address has always, we have been a city for 27 years now, and, and we're now going into our 28th year, and we've never actually had a State of the City that was truly open to the public. Over the course of those years, the State of the City address has been provided, or been given at the Chamber of Commerce during those luncheons. It costs money to go to that, it's during the middle of the day, and at noon time, luncheon event. I've always thought for years that we should open this up to the public and have it, you know, open, free to the public, and make sure that we do that. So, thank you. And so this, the, this month, on the 22nd of January, at our brand-new Performing Arts and Events Center, we will have the first-ever State of the City address that I will give to the public at our new, brand-new Performing Arts and Events Center. Starts at 4:00 p.m., and then there's a reception to follow. It's a little bit later. I wanted to, people do have families and, and schedules, so I didn't want to get too far into the evening, but 4:00 p.m., Performing Arts and Events Center, that's Monday, January 22nd. I really hope you can make it. We'll put signs around town, and also we'll make sure to advertise for it. Okay, and come one, come all. It's free to the public. All right, and then, let's see, we've got the City Council Annual Retreat. That's Saturday, February 3rd, at Dumas Bay, down, down by the water. That'll start at 8:30 a.m. That's a great opportunity for the council and for city staff and myself to really talk about the visioning for the future. Preparations are underway for that, for that retreat now, and again, that'll be at Dumas Bay on the weekend of Saturday, February 3rd. Again, it'll go for most of the day, probably till about early to mid-afternoon, and there's always an opportunity for public comment there. And we had a couple of suggestions by council members a few years ago to record this, and we will record that and re-air pertinent sections. Okay, now for the most important part of the evening, citizen comment. So I'll go ahead and identify individuals, and we've got a couple of people that have, will be speaking for five minutes because they speak for more than five individuals. But the first we have is Nick Wilson, that's three minutes, then Lori Seacrest, that'll be a five-minute, and then Cindy Flanagan will be for five minutes.
All right. Hi, I'm Nick Wilson. First, I'm up here to congratulate Jesse Johnson for the position. In case you didn't know, he actually came to an event last year in the summer before he was sitting there, the Friendship Day, and then I represented the Black and Brown Summit, so just wanted to congratulate you again, made the time. I also want to thank for, I'm very thankful for the 312th Steel Lake Park sidewalk, actually, that was built there this year. That was a very nice improvement for the safety of our citizens and the public. And the biggest one I actually really appreciated was the 356 on Enchanted Parkway to Pack Highway. That was a very, very nice addition. It looks so beautiful. I remember how narrow that was as a kid, and how dangerous it was, but it is so much better with that construction, so I'm very thankful for that. Also, on the Friendship Day, I don't want it to be international, can we just change it to National Friendship Day instead?
You got it, man.
Thank you.
Consider it done.
And also, another addition for a good construction idea, I know you guys are on a budget. If possible, on 21st, between like 336th and 330th, the road is very, very narrow there, and there's not lights, and even if you can't invest a whole lot, it would be nice if we had like a line for our pedestrians. I mean, the road is like super narrow. I mean, it's just waiting for an accident to happen. And last thing, this is to Susan and Jim, how often do you guys check your emails? Just curious.
About every 10 minutes.
About every 10 minutes? Okay, cool. That's pretty much about it, yeah, because I do want to send some pictures of that area that's very narrow, that needs a little attention, so, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And Nick is actually the, the originator, and that's why I felt so free to give him an immediate answer. Nick started Friendship Day here in the city of Federway, and, and we really appreciate that. It's going to be an annual event.
And I do want to thank Jesse Johnson also for being open to coming that event to me, so that's why I represented him at the Black and Brown Summit, Highline, to get a good experience, so.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Okay, we've got Lori Seacrest, and she's got five minutes. And then Cindy for five minutes.
Okay, Happy New Year, Mayor Farrell, councilmembers, city staff, friends, and neighbors, and welcome Councilman Tron, and congratulations to our new deputy mayor, Susan Honda. So as this is the first meeting of the new year, it would seem appropriate to me to speak about the many accomplishments the Save Warehouse Campus organization had while working in partnership with the city, county, state, and other stakeholders, including Forterra during the year 2017, as there were many to be proud of, but I'm going to have to save that for another meeting. Tonight, I want to discuss the accuracy in our reporting. The Save Warehouse Campus representatives have always and will always only use and present documented, verifiable facts when we speak about anything that concerns the former Warehouse Campus, whether speaking about the habitat, the trees, the watershed, or the traffic. So two weeks after the December 2nd council meeting, where several of us spoke about our concern over the impacts that the approximately 1,200 semi-trucks would have, not only in the vicinity of the former Warehouse Campus, but to the city of Federway and the entire region, I was copied on an email that IRG's Tom Esmer had sent to the members of the council and other key stakeholders in reference to the inaccuracy of our numbers. So for the record, I would like to address that the numbers we used were taken directly from what was submitted, directly from the, I'm sorry, what was submitted by IRG to the city and posted on the city's FTP site. We also confirmed this data with the Department of Community Development Office, who confirmed it is the only submittal that the city had received. The 756 truck trips for the business park is what was submitted for the permitting, together with the approximately 400 trucks for warehouse A and B make up that 1,200 semi-truck cumulative total, truck traffic to and from the campus that we spoke about. The importance here is that the Save Warehouse Campus group used IRG's submitted numbers and did not create our own. When new information is formally published on the city's FTP site, we will adjust our data. So IRG's traffic engineer indicated that the trip generation reports are outdated. The documents on the FTP site are based on the ITE 9th edition and used LUC 150 for warehousing. IRG's updated analysis, which is not yet formally submitted to the city, is now based on the ITE 10th edition and LUC 130 for an industrial park. So you're probably all just like me, I didn't know what an ITE or a LUC stood for, so the ITE refers to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and the LUC is the Land Use Code. So these terms do not concern me. What does concern me, and should concern everyone, is that the updated analysis is now being based on an industrial park. Either way, the LUC 150 for warehousing or the LUC 130 for industrial park in the city of Federway, which is considered an urban growth area, warehousing or industrial, simply put, is not acceptable uses for this land. So we do have a couple of questions. So if, in fact, there are revisions to the application, when will the data be made public? And is it common during a land use... will the data be made public? And is it common during a land use application for a developer to resubmit trip generation numbers during the application process? And at what point would the numbers be finalized? When a developer states that they will generate X amount of semi-trucks a day, how is that truck traffic monitored once the development is in operation? And what happens to a company if they are generating more truck trips than what was stated in the application? And lastly, are there controls on noise levels, including mitigation, mitigative controls on what allowed hours of operations are, and monitoring of air quality? Once again, I want to express our sincere thanks to the mayor, to the city staff, and even Tom Mesmer with IRG, who have always kept an open line of communications with us. The magnitude of these projects requires diligence, trust, inaccuracy, and transparency, and I hope that we will all continue to work together for a better good for Federway. In two thousand eighteen, the Save Weyerhauser Campus Organization will continue to work with our partners on our conservation efforts. We will continue to educate the general public and community leaders about the detrimental impacts of the proposed warehouse development on the campus, and we will continue to oppose inappropriate development of the environmentally sensitive campus, both in the grassroots level and in the legal arena. Our mission remains steadfast, which is to protect the west shoreline of Northlake, the Rhodey Garden, and the Bonzai Collection, to preserve the wildlife habitat and the crucial watershed, the forests and meadows of the campus, as well as its trails and public access to them, and more importantly than ever, to maintain the unique character of the campus, which is required by the Concomitant Agreement and its authorizing ordinance. So, I look forward to helping make Federway a destination city, and to echo what Bob Rogner stated in the December twenty-second Mirror, those seated in front of us and to the left side of the building, and in fact, really all of us, have been given a rare opportunity to make a difference. We get one chance at this, and we can't miss it. We must focus on what will be important to the next generation and the many generations that follow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now, and now Cindy Flanagan.
Good evening, y'all. Uh, congratulations, and welcome to council members Tran and Johnson. Welcome back, Mayor Farrell and Councilmember Moore, and congratulations Deputy Mayor Susan Honda. Tonight's council meeting is one that our Rainier Audubon and Save Weyerhauser Campus Group have been eagerly waiting, not just because it's a new year and we look forward to another year of working with the city to help keep Federway such a great city, but also for Consent Agenda Item Five C, Acceptance of the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Eighteen King County Conservation Future Funds. I'd like to begin by thanking the city for its commitment to conserving the fifty-four acre Northlake shoreline on the historic Weyerhauser Campus, and tonight, we hope council will continue this journey by voting in support of the Consent Agenda Item. Tonight, I'd like to give an overview of this incredible gem that we're all working so hard to conserve. Some of this information is taken directly from the Conservation Futures Application that we had the pleasure to work with, the city's great, hard-working staff in Mark Juan's Public Works Department, particularly the stormwater management team, so thank you to them for their excellent work. The fifty-four acre Northlake shoreline is classified as a Category One wetland, which is defined as bogs and wetlands of high conservation value. The property is largely undeveloped, pristine stretches of second-growth forest and healthy wetlands. The forested acreage provides significant surface water retention, detention, and natural filtration benefits, and offers unique natural habitat in an urban setting. Acquiring this fifty-four acres will help protect aquatic habitat, maintain the natural water quality and quantity benefits, preserve wetlands and riparian habitat, and maintain valuable open space in the Upper East Hailibos watershed, which is the main tributary for the salmon-bearing Hailibos Creek, and an important part of the white Puallup watershed salmon recovery strategy. The mature second-growth forest, wetlands, and riparian corridor provides habitat for a hundred-and-twenty bird species and a variety of insects, amphibians, reptiles, and small mammals. The proposed acquisition area is an integral part of the green space that separates residential areas in Eastern Federway from the busy I-five corridor and the commercial density of downtown Federway. As well, acquisition of the area could provide opportunity to extend the trail system and create the only publicly maintained trail east of the I-five corridor within the city. What if the threat, what is the threat if we don't conserve this fifty-four acre property? The current property owner of the historical Weyerhauser Campus plans to develop the property, however, the full extent is unknown. The target area includes parcels or portions of parcels that are largely encumbered by wetlands and wetland buffers. Development in a portion of and adjacent to these sensitive areas is a real possibility. Development could fragment the riparian habitat and have an adverse effect on the quality of stormwater entering the Northlake. Acquiring these shoreline parcels provides the opportunity to preserve and protect them while maintaining some of the riparian corridor. The vision for conserving the fifty-four acres is to protect the watershed in the healthy second-growth forest, to maintain healthy habitat for wildlife, provide easy-access public trails for passive recreation, offer year-round water access, and provide historical and environmental education. A gem like this isn't something that is easily found in an urban environment, and the easy public access makes this a great opportunity for people to experience incredible nature in an urban setting. We all know Mayor Farrell loves to use and hear quotes, and so one must kick off the new year with quote tradition. Vaklav Kalas was pivotal to the design and maintenance of the historic Weyerhauser Campus landscape. He was the Weyerhauser forester for decades. The following are Vaklav's wise words about the intent of conserving the landscape of the historic Weyerhauser Campus, including the fifty-four acre Northlake shoreline. The most important landscaping goal is the beautification of the area without disturbing the balance of nature. The company's long-range goal is to have a working forest with the beauty of a park, which provides both a wildlife sanctuary and a delightful place for employers and other visitors to stroll, to give headquarters a beautiful surrounding, to use the woodland plantings to provide a buffer zone against expecting sprawl, and to keep natural beauty in and man-made disorder out. The campus is a living textbook that shows the public how to use and improve our forest lands. We must take heed of Vaklav's words about the nature and character of the campus, and the intent of the use of the land, and the importance of conserving the land for nature and for humankind. Tonight, council has the opportunity to embark on a new chapter by voting yes to accept the million-dollar King County Conservation Few Funds, so the city can expand the scope of the Hailibos Creek Conservation Property Acquisition Project. We've done a great job on the West Hailibos, it's time to save and protect the East. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Next, we've got Dana Holloway, Rick Beard, and Sandra Kramer.
Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, good evening, my name is Dana Holloway. I'm a forty-one-year resident of Federway, so I've been here a long time. Uh, first, I would like to thank the members of Save Weyerhauser Campus, who are working to prevent the campus from becoming an industrial park. I respect your passion and activism focused on preserving and protecting this award-winning gem in Federway. Your grassroots efforts have shown me the importance of citizens being involved in what is happening in Federway, at city hall, and intending and in speaking up, at city hall meetings. I have seen how city government makes decisions that impact our daily lives, and the importance of participating in the process. Phew, next, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the new, uh, council members, uh, Johnson and Tran, and Deputy Mayor Honda. Uh, we have many chan- uh, challenges ahead of us facing the city. I look forward to positive relationships between the citizens and elected leaders as we work together to make our city a safer place in two thousand eighteen. And finally, to my fellow citizens of Federway, you must speak up to have your voice heard. Posting or venting on Facebook or next door is easy, but it doesn't affect change. You need to communicate in person, through emails, and attending the city council meetings. If you don't bring up issues or your concerns, and share your vision with the future of the city with the mayor and the city council, your voice cannot be heard. And I will end with a quote, too, from Plato, "Your silence gives consent." Or stated another way, "Silence is acceptance." Don't be silent. Make your voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Uh, Rick Beard, and then Sandra Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Happy New Year to y'all. I'm here on the, uh, the Federway rezone, and my name is Rick Beard. Me and my family have, uh, been living in the area twenty-one years. My wife and I have worked hard for many years with a dream from the very beginning that someday our land would prove as worth and suitable, or be suitable for a development deal such as the one we're being discussed tonight. I have seen all our surrounding cities as Edgewood, Five, Milton, growing immensely over the last few years, watching houses pop up everywhere, most of the time being sold before they're even built. Sure, I could hold off another ten years or when the land will be so much more scarce, but I want everybody to prosper from this. I want my retired neighbors to be able to have time, enjoy their retired years. I want the city to grow and expand the amount of people that reside here and spend money at our nearby businesses. I want the traffic to improve in the Pacific area, so that the surrounding residents and travelers can spend less time in traffic and more time with their families. I have dealt with many hurdles during my twenty-one years in Federway, and I will continue to fight regardless of tonight's outcome. Uh, nothing has come easy for me, but I am kind of disgruntled with how long this process is for, or how long this process is for something that would benefit everyone, everybody so well. I signed my first papers in September two thousand sixteen, and we are sixteen months later, still with no answer. Our main issues were environmental impacts and not having all parties on board. The environmental impact study show there is no impact with this project, and our few last members signing on has fixed the spot zoning. Myself, Margaret, and my fellow neighbors have done everything needed to ensure everything is done properly and professionally. I truly ask to consider this rezone plan to create an everlasting enhancement to our city and grow the long overdue expansion of housing in the area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Sandra Kramer, or Sandra Kramer, and then Roger Van Dofe. Ben Donhoff.
Good evening. This has, uh, really been a great city council meeting. Um, and I'm not even, I'm not even from here, so, but I hope my city does as well. Um, my name's Sandra Kramer, and I'm one of the five owners of, um, I have the parcel number if you want it, um, at fourteen fourteen South Three Seventy-Sixth Street and the adjacent parcel, it's an unincorporated, um, King County. Um, I support the plan change and ask that these parcels be included in the area proposed for change. Puget Sound Regional Council's two thousand forty plan projects that one million people will move into the Puget Sound area by two thousand forty. We know that affordable housing in King County is a problem, and that lack in inventory contributes to the affordability issues. Uh, Federway is a growing city. By increasing the density of the acres proposed for change, there will be more housing available in Federway to meet these needs. Uh, Federway should want the people who can afford to live in Seattle or Bellevue and want to call Federway home. The density proposed is more in line with the residential zoning throughout the city and the zoning to the east of the property. The current large lot zoning does not help the housing availability or affordability challenges that face Federway today, much less as the population grows. Um, in closing, I support the, uh, comprehensive managed growth plan for this area.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Roger, uh, Ben Donhoff.
Okay, uh, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Roger Van Donhoff, I'm also one of the, one of the five owners of the same property that Sandra just talked about. Um, I, I'm gonna try to make this short. Um, I just wanna thank the council and the, and staff of Federway for, uh, honoring the process that they, they've gone through. This is basically my first time going through this type of a process, a, a process of, you know, decisions about upzones and so, so I didn't know what to expect, really, here, but having watched the process, I'm glad that you took into account not just the financial interests in, uh, this whole process, which was my concern, that, you know, it would only be about the money, uh, and, but taking into account the quality of life of the residents who, uh, are gonna continue to live in Federway, and are gonna continue to be residents of Federway, our quality of life, uh, other interests besides how much money we can make on our property by selling it, uh, and, and taking, I did hear some comments, taking into account that maybe we don't want high density everywhere in the city, maybe it's good to have diversity in the city, and some areas of high density, and some, uh, where it's not permitted, there, you know, there are reasons for that, especially environmentally sensitive areas. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to, um, express my thank you for the process, and, um, we'll see where it goes from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Edmund Witter. And then after that, Keong Berry, Pam Odison, and then Linda Kuchmark.
Hi, good evening, council and mayor of Federway. My name is Edmund Witter, I'm the managing attorney of the Housing Justice Project. My clinic that I operate in the Superior Courts throughout King County works with, uh, tenants who are facing eviction and have general housing issues. So, I work with a lot of tenants in King County, and I see a lot of what the issues are. So, today, I'm here to sort of talk, 'cause I was invited to at least give some information to the council about the importance of rental inspection ordinances, which is something I think I would urge Federway to take into account and consider, and really sort of see what that can do. What does a rental inspection ordinance do? It effectively creates a system where tenants can know who the landlord is, and when there's a complaint to code compliance, that code compliance has a landlord or an agent to reach out to when that, to talk about that issue. So, if there's leaks, if there's a problem with infestation, right now, what I tend to see when I work with, um, code compliance here and in other cities in South King County, when there are issues with, uh, repairs at this moment, a lot of times, I don't get a lot of follow-up from the other side of, 'cause sometimes it's hard to find out who the landlord is, who the management is. The other thing it will do is also ensure that Federway cares about its tenants, and make sure that hazards, more density happening in this city, that more, that tend, that there's, ensure quality housing. I'll give you a recent example, we had a tenant who was in Federway come recently, and there was large gaping holes throughout the entire first floor of the apartment. And how do we know the landlord knew about it and hadn't done anything about it? Well, we found the landlord's shoe inside one of the holes, and that this was an issue that apparently been going on for about six months, and that there was actually just nothing being done to remedy this issue. A rental inspection ordinance would give, would require the landlord to at least address these issues on a prompt, timely basis, to make sure that these are resolved. Right now, in the state of Washington, you, tenants throughout the state do not have good remedies. I will say, even as a seasoned housing attorney, I will not use the remedies that are afforded to me by the state legislator, because it's very difficult to get repairs done in an apartment without taking significant risk. You can't withhold your rent in the state of Washington. If you go through the other procedures of putting your rent in escrow, it has so many traps that a tenant who does so, does so at his or her own peril, and could easily end up owing legal fees in the process, not to mention a damaged tenant screening report that would affect their ability to move. There needs to be new solutions. There needs to be new solutions, because as this housing problem comes down, I think it's, or comes down into South County, and it's starting to really develop here, I think there needs, we need to start really considering new solutions. Thank you.
Thank you Edmund.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Councilmember Moore had his hand up then. Councilmember Duclaw. Edmund, could you stay close to the?
Sorry about that.
Edmund, it was certainly nice to meet you earlier. And I know we see some folks from Washington, Kan, and of course, and so, I will say that this is an issue that, that I've been researching and discussing with some of the members. And this is something I'm highly interested in. And I would expect, and I would hope that, and I look forward to working with the appropriate committee and/or the mayor's office on this. Because I, to me, this is a justice issue. Everybody, I demand that everybody has a quality of life. I think that's important. We owe it to the public. We owe it to those residents. So I think you've come here on a good issue, on a good topic. I will say that there's, there are questions that we have to go through and ask. You know, how's it gonna impact staffing, to budgets, to whatnot, and can we handle it? But I will tell you that it is an issue that I definitely am highly interested in. And I believe some of my colleagues don't want to speak for them, are interested in this as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member.
Councilmember Duclaw.
Thank you for bringing this up. As the former CEO of the Multi-Service Center, I did develop housing, apartments, and single-family for low-income people. And we would never allow something like that to exist in our program. I really would like us to look into this. I know staff has a lot on its plate, but I think this is a dangerous situation. And we should really look into it a little bit more, and maybe one of our staff members can contact you, and, and maybe we can bring together a small committee or something to hear more details and try to figure out how to handle it. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a good opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Asaf Adosso.
I too wanted to thank you for this. I work for the housing authority, so no one can take residence without it being inspected. So I think it's a great ordinance. My question for you is, are there cities that have, that do have this ordinance right now? And if so, what cities in our, in our state?
Yeah, there's actually a number of models throughout the country. I mean, locally, you have Seattle. I think it's probably the first in Washington that has one. But there's a number in Sacramento, San Francisco, Boston, New York City, that all have their own versions of it. So there's a lot of different ways to do so, and especially if the council is very concerned about how much this would cost, there's a lot of ways that cities have tried to work around those issues.
So Seattle's the only city, in King County at least, that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan, can you, Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, and, and I'm also thankful for you to be here. As a former renter, I'm empathetic to some of the challenges, and I know we have some folks that'll speak on behalf of some of the challenges here in Federal Way. I was kind of wondering what the interplay is between our Washington State code currently for the Landlord-Tenant Act and currently with our city? Is there some type of interplay that you see happening, or how does that work?
Yeah, there is a very big question here about how they come together. Overall, it's not a, I wouldn't say that the state RLTA or the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act actually preempts it by really any extensive way that would interfere. This has been tested already, because Seattle's rental ordinance has had some challenges that have up, been upheld in court. So generally, it does not, I don't think there's really a major preemption issue, although it does obviously depend on what direction the council takes.
All right, thank you. Edmund, can you come back at our next meeting on the 16th?
January? Yes.
January 16th?
Yeah.
We're gonna have a present, I'm gonna ask legal counsel to research this issue, and we'll give a presentation to the public to follow up on this issue about what we found out. And the next, at our next meeting, we'll, we'll follow up, and we'll report where we're at on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.[850.26][850.26](APPLAUSE). All right, Ryan, let's follow up together on this, okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, Keong Berry, Pam Odison, and then Linda Coachmar.
Hi, my name is Keong Berry. I'm a UFCW 21 Executive Board, Board Member. I'm also a member. I work in the grocery industry, and we represent over 49,000 members in Washington State. A lot of them are in, in the local area. All the QFC, Fred Meyer, Safeway, Albertsons. We also represent medical, nurses, labs, hospitals. So this is an issue that affects everybody, actually. We all want safe living environment in our communities, and without inspections, and a way for tenants to get the remedies that they need to feel safe in their residence. It's, it could be a safety issue. It could be a life-saving issue. So I feel, and we all feel, we should have an ordinance, a procedure, where a small renter could go to and have justice. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.[935.73][935.73](APPLAUSE). Pam Odison. Then Linda Coachmar.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you for your time this evening. Feel like we have a little bit of subject whiplash. I'm here for the rezone resolution. I'd like you to, encourage you not to vote for this denial. When we first went into the city from being in the county, we were suburban estates in the county zoning. We are no longer, and it's the same zoning. I mean, it was different name, but same zoning density. We're no longer suburban. We are in an urban environment, but we're living on suburban land, where it should be allowed to be more urban. Originally, when we applied, we applied as individuals. We did not realize we could apply as a group. Had we known that, we would have applied as a group. And we had a few people that were a little late to the party, but those people have now joined the party. So we aren't a bunch of mishmashed checkerboard. We are a unit now. And I think it could very well be a very big boon for the city to have this area be developed into more urban environments so people have affordable places to live, and they don't end up homeless in the snow needing a multipurpose center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1021.41][1021.41](APPLAUSE). All right, Linda Coachmar. And then Greg Aman, and Mia Franklin, and Larry Neither.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and congratulations Deputy Mayor, and to all of those who have just been sworn in. Jesse, you're sitting in my old seat. I expect great things out of you. Thank you very much for working on the homeless initiative. I'm very concerned about that. I was driving to work at 6:00 in the morning the other day, two days ago, and I saw a woman lying on the ground. It was freezing. There's not much difference between 32 degrees and 33 degrees. I looked at my car, it was 33 degrees. She was laying on her side, and there was a shopping cart in front of her, and I recognized her as one of our homeless. I was shocked. I've never seen that before. I was horrified. I called 911 immediately. We have a homeless woman, these are not women with children, these are homeless women, sitting and making up her house at 320th and Pack Highway on the seat that is there in front of the gas station. This is horrendous. I think that personally, I find this just really upsetting. We've talked about this for years. Was on the council, gosh, it was 20 years ago when I was first on the council. We still haven't solved this problem. Thank you, you're getting closer. I, I knew about New Hope and that the fact that they had people who would stay there during very cold temperatures. We need, we don't need patchwork. We need to create something maybe around the Day Center where the food bank is. Thank you very much, Councilmember Duclaw. So that we have it all centralized in that area down there. I, I, I just, I think it's just unconscionable. We're a large city. We're one of the largest cities in the state. And we need to address it, not just on a city level, but as a regional level. And so I think we need to be bringing in some of our neighboring cities. So thank you very much, Mayor Pharaoh, for taking the initiative, and I hope that you continue with that and working with the day shelter. There are many, many churches. I've been doing a little bit of volunteering, not much, with serving the homeless. And they want to be recognized just as everybody else, even if they have, we have some with disabilities. I have a grandchild with a disability. I worry about her. We, they have mental health issues. And I know that some of our homeless are here because there are woods here for them to live in. And they prefer to live in the woods rather than in the shelters. Give me one more minute. I want to throw some ideas out for you for your retreat. You've got a lot on your plate. I absolutely realize that. But you know, God bless those folks who live over at Warehouser. They're here all of the time trying to protect that beautiful gem in our community. What I, and I talked with Mr. Mesner tonight about a corporation that I'm now associated with that I work for. And I, I really think you all need...
Actually, please give the former mayor two more minutes.
I appreciate that. Use the power of your office. You get out there, and you start going to some of those corporations, and you show up on their doorstep, and you say, "Do you realize that we don't have a BNO tax in the city? Do you realize that you don't have to pay those hundreds of thousands of dollars that my corporation is paying for in downtown Tacoma? Do you realize that you have a ready-made workforce here who is ready to go to work for you in this beautiful building at the Warehouser campus?" You need to just market the HE double heck out of that building. And if you do that, maybe that will relieve Mr. Mesner so he doesn't keep marketing more warehouses there. And by the way, I think, and I've thought this for a long time, that that area, south of 356, all along that area, just along Pack Highway, rezone that sucker so that you get some warehouses down in there. That's where the trucks should be. So anyway, that's my two cents. And before I leave, I have one last frivolous thing to ask of you, oh, two things. One is not frivolous. The other thing I want to say is that when you meet with your legislators, talk to them about the Landlord-Tenants Act and what they can do, what the ordinance says that they're presenting tonight.
That's a great idea.
With the rental. See what they can do to get something presentable for the legislature. It doesn't always get done right away, and maybe it takes a few years, but get it moving. And finally, my frivolous question, my frivolous. All of the cities all around you, and I was thinking about you, Mayor Pharaoh, this year. Here you were running for mayor, and you didn't have your own parade to be in. We, we've had a parade for years. We used to have a parade years ago. We still don't have one. Every single city, even the city of Pacific, has a parade. We need to get that community experience going again.
We do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.[1343.41][1343.41](APPLAUSE). Aren't you glad we gave her an extra two minutes? Thank you very much, Linda. And you know, I used to sit next to Councilmember Coachmar, and really enjoyed working with her. So thank you very much. Yarden, can you please add that for discussion point with, at the legislative breakfast about that very issue that we were talking about? Okay, now we got Greg Aman.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am also speaking on Item 6A and 7A, the site-specific rezone requests. My name is Greg Aman. I represent for, request numbers four through nine. And I brought a visual aid, just to give you an idea of, I know in your council packet, you have, you have an individual page for each of the parcels. I put all the parcels together and shaded them in yellow, plus the three parcels that were, tried to get in and submitted applications, but their applications were late. So you can see from the diagram that there is a contiguous, compact area of parcels that are currently zoned, R S 35, that are requesting the rezoning to R S 5. The reason that the mayor and the committee initially recommended denial of these requests is that the approval of just the six requests would in fact create a checkerboard pattern of high-density and low-density residential development and amount to what I believe the staff report terms as spot zoning. However, since those six requests were received, as I mentioned, three additional property owners attempted to submit their applications, but they were past the deadline, past the deadline, so they got rejected. If, if you add those three in, it's a total of 33.41 acres. But the total amount of, of land that is zoned RS 35 is about 55 acres, and I've shown that in, outlined in blue. And that area was zoned RS 35 when it was annexed into the city, initially because there's wetlands located on that area. And at the time, the city did not feel they had an adequate critical areas ordinance that would sufficiently protect those critical areas there. So, they, they determined that zoning it at low density at RS 35 was necessary to protect those areas. However, now, the city has since developed new critical areas ordinance that does protect those areas. So, so now it doesn't make sense, is no longer necessary or appropriate to keep these areas zoned RS 35. A major reason for the skyrocketing housing prices in King County is lack of housing supply, which has been previously mentioned. And the city's own land capacity analysis determined that more housing is needed within Federal Way to meet future demand. Changing this area to RS 5 will increase housing supply to allow the city to meet projected future demand, provide the potential for more affordable housing, and further the goals and policies of the Growth Management Act to provide for compact urban growth and reduce sprawl. Many of the comments in opposition to these comp plan and zoning changes cited environmental concerns. However, the city correctly concluded through the non-project CIPA process that the changes would not have significant environmental impacts, and any specific potential development impact, such as to wetlands or traffic, will be addressed and mitigated at the project level. The council does have the authority on its own to adopt an area-wide comprehensive plan amendment for this entire 55-acre area to RS 5, or in the alternative to the area outlined in yellow. And I urge the council to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[414.12][414.12](APPLAUSE). Mia Franklin. And after Mia, Larry Neether.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mia Franklin. I reside in Federal Way, and I'm a proud member of Washington Can. For more than six years, I worked as a disability advocate with families of color who had a loved one with a disability. In this position, I had the pleasure of providing direct support to families in their homes. As much pleasure as this gave me, it was also painfully heartbreaking to see firsthand the housing conditions that many of the families were living in due to slum lords' lack of responsibility in providing quality living environments. Throughout many areas of King County, even here in Federal Way, families are dwelling in homes with mold, broken windows and doorknobs, floor tiles missing, plumbing issues in kitchens and bathrooms, crumbling staircases, broken appliances, and rotens. I could go on and on, but you get the picture. Children and families are suffering throughout our communities because slum lords don't care and tenants don't know their rights. People will live in the worst conditions imaginable, fearing that if they speak up and ask for special accommodation to support the loved one with the disability, their application may likely be rejected, and the possibility of ending up homeless becomes real. No one in here can deny that when a child suffers at home, they also suffer academically in school. When you add the layer of health concerns from their living environment, the impact of this negligence seems like a criminal act against our children. I am here today because slum lords are oppressing many of our communities by practicing discrimination against tenants and negligence with poor quality housing. I want everybody in here to know that there is power in the people. And if we, the people, want to hold landlords accountable for their actions, we must stand united and demand quality tenant rights. Until city councils and state legislators begin to support and represent the people by holding slum lords accountable for their actions, making tenants' rights a priority, and putting the health and well-being of our children and families first, this will continue to happen. So, on behalf of the people, I'm asking you, the city council, to please pass legislative regulations, like the rental inspection law, and other strong legislation that will provide a quality standard of living that arms the good people, the citizens of the state, with tenants' rights, while holding slum lords accountable for their actions. Thank you, and remember, all power always to the people.[611.79][611.79](APPLAUSE).
Larry Neither.
Good evening, Mayor, Assistant Mayor, and all the council members, everybody else here. My name is Larry Neither, and my wife is Edith Neither. We moved out here shortly after I got out of the service in 1968. I've been there ever since, and we voted to be annexed into the city of Federal Way when that came about. We've seen tremendous changes. And we watched Regency Woods, Brittany Lane, everything go in, the assisted living place there, which is the Meridian down the road from us. We've seen a lot of changes. And I'm getting up in the age. Yes, I do want to sell. Being 76 years old, and I do have a couple of disabilities, and so does my wife, I guess it's no more than normal to want to sell when you get that age and get into a townhouse or apartment or whatever. But what we're asking is, the easy way to do this is to go with the majority. Majority has, already has R5 zoning. We don't. I have the two partials, number nine, on the list there. All we would ask is to be treated fairly. I know the easy way for everybody to vote is to go with the majority. Ask yourself, is this fair? It's not fair at all, because they got there first. We didn't protest or do anything when they put those two places in, Regency Woods and Brittany Lane, or when they put Enchanted Village Wild Waves and expanded that. That's good jobs for people. Lloyd's is good jobs for people. I don't know what to expect here, but I know what I want, and that is for you people to vote fairly on this and treat us all alike, and go to the R5 zoning code. I'm getting up there, and this is, this is what I like, and that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[763.62][763.62](APPLAUSE). Tuckrisha Bennett?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here to hear me out. My name is Ty, Tuckrisha Bennett. I'm a mother, a proud mother of my son. He is one years old. I am a Washington Can member. I work as a hairstylist, and I'm a renter in Federal Way. I've lived in Federal Way, Washington, for the last four or five years. I'm here to show city council what tenant powers look like. When I first moved into my current apartment, I moved into my apartment, there were screws on the carpet floor, and shortly after, we began having issues with our sink overflowing, our dishwasher wasn't properly working. We first moved in, our key, it didn't work to let us in our home. It took us about five to 10 minutes at first to lock our door, and it took that amount of time to unlock it as well. And so, after a while, it took a while for them to fix the problems that we had at our home. Toilet seat wasn't connected all the way to the seat as it should have been. We was able to see the screws coming out the toilet seat. And it took them a while to fix these issues. It was something important to us that we needed done that obviously wasn't important to them. Took them a while to come fix anything. And I know I'm not alone. I know I'm not the only one in my community who has lived in substandard conditions. I'm here to share my experience and to tell my city council that we need to fight, we need to fight slum lords, and that this will continue unless we stand with our renters. So, please pass the rental inspection law. We will continue to hold landlords and city council accountable. We shouldn't have to live this way. Thanks again for hearing me out.
Thank you very much.[881.69][881.69](APPLAUSE). All right. And again, we're going to have Ms. Bennett, at the next council meeting, we're going to have a brief presentation. So, if you're interested, and we're going to probably talk about this at our Legislative Breakfast on Thursday as well. So, thank you very much for coming. All right. Mr. Tom Mesmer, and then Allison Taylor, and then Suzanne Vargo, and then we've got a letter by Suzanne Peterson.
Thank you. I, I wrote nothing down. I've got nothing prepared. And when Yarden asked me if I was going to speak tonight, I said, "I hope not." But I do want to fill in some of the blanks. And I want to thank Councilmember Johnson for making me feel really old, because you're the same age as my oldest child. So, a couple of things to fill in the blanks here, and add a little color commentary. Brian mentioned that we show those buildings as buildings, and I'm a real stickler about that. No one wants, no one's out there marketing warehouses. Absolutely no one. We're out there marketing buildings. We want office buildings would be our first choice. We talk about highest and best use. Our second choice would be manufacturing, and we currently talk to aerospace manufacturers. And I'm not even thinking about the Green Line Business Park. That, as, as Brian said, that, that hasn't even been deemed complete yet. I'm really working on what you saw as Building A and Building B right now. We talked to aerospace manufacturers, who are, you know, the folks with the high-paying jobs, or the folks with a lot less traffic, because what comes in in a truck stays there for a long time to get value added before it leaves in another truck. The problem I'm having right now is when aerospace manufacturers come to us and ask us when, you know, Building A will be ready so that they can lease it, I don't have a clue. I can't tell them anything. So, you know, my fear is that we'll lose the aerospace manufacturing, and then we will be talking to warehouses, because we are marketing buildings. On the traffic side, we will probably have to look at those buildings as industrial or warehouses, only because that's the, the worst possible scenario from a traffic standpoint. That doesn't mean that's what we're marketing them as. I would far sooner get office space, but I think I've told you before, the current data in Federal Way in Auburn is that 28.9% of the available office space is vacant. So, we're having a really tough time, even with the half a million square feet that we've got that's already built. I can tell you that we've got a very serious proposal out there in the headquarters building. And I can tell you, it's serious enough that, that we wouldn't see a dime from the rent for the first almost four years, as every dime goes back into the building in the interior, or to commissions to the, the real estate brokers for the people who are looking at the building. So, we've cut our rates to the point where it would be three-point-something years of, of all the rent goes back in the building just to get the tenant. So, so we're very serious about this. I want to thank Brian and his crew for helping us reparsealize the headquarters building. It's now on its own parcel of 90-some acres, everything inside the Ring Road. That's because that's important to us, to not be broken up and developed within that space. And, and we do have a purchase order, a purchase and sale contract out there for the South Building with a cultural center. We could have sold that three times over to, to industrial users. We held out for the cultural center, and we hope that'll close sometime in the next two months. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. Allison Taylor. Then we've got Suzanne Vargo, and then Betty Taylor. Dr. Taylor. Long story.
She gets it. Thank you. New council. I'm very excited. Obviously, everyone knows how, how I was tied into a certain council member's race, and I really appreciate that everybody's in their seat and looks lovely. Congratulations to our new deputy mayor. And I'm kind of wondering about the magic about how that sign is already up that says Susan Honda Deputy Mayor. Like, I don't know how that happens. It's impressive, though.
It's, that magic's over there.
Yay, go Stephanie! Woo-woo! Actually, somebody said topic whiplash, and I'm going to take you way back to actually one of the presentations we had earlier about people that work outside of their normal hours. Mr. Farrell, you already know this. I think Mr. Moore knows this as well. But I recently posted on a public page on Facebook, where there's only 2,500 members or something, and I wanted to publicly state that another person that I know that works very hard in the city after hours is our mayor. And, and I know that personally, because recently I've had three or four interactions with him about things going on in the city that were happening outside of work hours, one at night, a couple during the day. Specifically, the most recent one was, I think it was Christmas Day or the day after Christmas, where, where I live at 320th and First, somebody had dropped these really big rocks, almost boulders, like, like a truck had just dumped them or something. I'm not really sure. But as I was coming through the intersection, I could just see one of those rocks. I really liked Final Destination movies. I think that this is where this comes from. But I could see, like, one of those rocks getting kicked up and, and killing someone, because the rocks were so big. And cars just go through that intersection like crazy. So, I, I messaged, you know, I think it was Christmas Day, actually. And I, and I sent, I sent Mayor Farrell a message, and I said, "Hey, this is what's happening on my street corner. I don't know who to call, but I have your number on my phone." So, you know, I hope something can happen. And a few hours later, we were coming home, and I, and I saw that the street, the people were out. They were cleaning. There was a pile of those rocks, and they were actually protecting that pile. I sent a picture to Mr. Farrell to show that there was somebody waiting to get those rocks removed. And so, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have, you know, everyday sort of groundskeepers and maintenance people that get out there and, and frankly, like, bust their ass when it snows, things like that. But I also want to point out that we have city council members, a deputy mayor, and a mayor that also are available to us after hours, who are there when they need us, and they will make things happen, even if they're not doing it themselves. They knew who to call. They get things done. And then particularly, that particular issue was very close to my heart. It's my neighborhood. These, these could have been my neighbors affected. And I really appreciate that, that we have unsung heroes all over, but that includes the people that lead our city. And that, that to me is a great testament to your leadership. And so, I want to say thank you to the mayor specifically for all of that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Suzanne Vargo.
Hi, council. Thank you very much for letting me speak. This is just off the cuff, so a few things I'd like to say. I can appreciate, this is about the rezoning, by the way. I can appreciate your need to please your neighbors, and your need is actually all about money. It's not really, you are representing all of the citizens of Federal Way. You are really just a small, little group. So, to say that you are representing all of us, that isn't quite true. The environment actually is not for you to decide what is best for the entire community. And just because people do need homes to live in does not justify the destruction of a highly sensitive area, the wildlife, and our aquifer. Buffets of trees are vitally important there for noise, pollutions, and our water distributions. You cannot say the upper development will not affect the lower, highly sensitive areas of Spring Valley. I would like to know what environmental studies the gentleman who spoke earlier could provide that, that proves that no damage would happen to these precious lands. Rezoned citizens have not displayed any concern for the environment, which they have lived their whole entire lives, as they say. Such in case Mr. Ellingson, our serious violator of a Class III wetland, as we've heard previously at past meetings, was instructed on how he could remedy his damages that he incurred. And now he has livestock on this land, and the feces is going into my, our aquifer. We, and I would like somebody to look into this, the code enforcement. I've talked to them numerous times. The, Mr. Ellingson actually is the one who got all of his neighbors together. He actually told me that himself. So, these are not individual people. Wildlife also has the right to a nice home, not just people. It's odd that the rezoners are so concerned about providing housing for people they don't even know. This is clearly not about doing what is right for your fellow man, but all about the almighty dollar. If you want to sell your property, go ahead and sell your property. It doesn't need to be rezoned. This land is specific because it is a filter for our aquifer, for our highly sensitive lands. These folks will not even be in the area. They're all looking to sell their land. So, why do they care what happens? They don't. We are here. We are fighting for this aquifer and this watershed, and it is extremely important. The rezoners did not meet the deadline. If we are following the letter of the law, this issue of rezoning is mute at this point, and we should discuss it in a year's time from now. I urge you to hold up the decision to deny the rezoning in this highly sensitive area, for it is for all of us. It's why we spent $15 million preserving the acreage that is below this rezon. Thank you so much.[1488.26][1488.26](APPLAUSE).
Okay. You know, hold, no, 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 no. If you've got something to say, would you please fill out a pink sheet, and we'll have you come to the podium. We, we can't conduct the meetings like that. But we'll have you come up to the podium, and we'll, I'll make sure you have time. Betty Taylor. And you, we can have you fill out a pink sheet even after. We'll, we'll have one up there for you. I'll call you next. Betty Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Betty Taylor. And I wasn't going to say anything, but as I, as the citizens got up to speak about different topics, firstly, the housing issue. One, one thing that I would like to bring about is, we do have a housing issue. And it's just, it's just not in Federal Way. It's in Fife, it's in Tacoma, it's in Seattle, it's in Pacific. But one issue I really want to bring up is, the, the rents are going up. I mean, people that do rent. I mean, I rent. I've lived where I live. I lived in my apartment complex for the last 15 years. When I moved there about 15 years ago, I remember how much the rent was. The rent was, for a one-bedroom apartment, was $660. So, from, from, from 15 years ago until now, my rent has increased. Now, it's going up to $1,275. And I'm talking about for a one-bedroom apartment. And I'm, I, I come before you honest, honestly and transparent, because I am human. And, and even though I may not look like I struggle, or I may not look like I, I feel or I hurt, but I do. I, I experienced a lot of things, just like you do. Anyway, housing, the, the rents are going up higher and higher. And we're talking about homeless people. We're talking about, some of the rents are going up so high that it's causing people to be homeless. It's forcing people out of their apartment complexes. Now, one thing that I'm going to ask specifically for this city council to do, in Seattle, they put a cap on rent increases. In Renton, they put a cap on rent increases. I'm asking for the city council in Federal Way to put a cap on rental increases. Our rents need to, our rents need to be capped. They keep out going up higher and higher every year. Every year, my rent goes up at least $100 extra dollars a year. It's been like that for the last six years. I'm not saying I can't afford it, because I can. But what I'm saying is that this has to stop, because it's forcing people out of their homes. You, you wonder why a lot of people are homeless? Rent increases are going up. They're not going down. So, I think, besides looking at the homeless issue, look at why people are homeless. Look at why. What is the cause? I mean, get down to the root, and then you can be able to solve the problem, because it's not going to go away. Talking about it is not going to help. You've got to do something about it. Get out there where the people are. Get out there among the people. Talk to them. That's going to help. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.[1716.24][1716.24](APPLAUSE). So, Ryan, we'll add that to the list of things to, to come back. And I think that's essentially a rent control proposal, and we'll, we'll talk about the reality of that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Edith Neeler, Neither, excuse me. And thank you, Ms. Neither, for having this filled out.
My name is Edith Neither, and I live in 1337322 Milton Road South. And this evening, one of the speakers here insulted me, because she called me and our other friends, neighbors, that we are doing this for the money, and we don't care about the environment. I clean up the garbage on Milton Road South. I have pickup loads of garbage. And that lady who spoke here- And that lady who spoke here, she talks about we don't care about the environment. That Milton Road South is the filthiest road in Federal Way. It's disgusting. The people in Regency Wood and Bridley Lane, they don't drive down there. They have their own road going in to their development. But for people saying that we have disregard of the environment because we are trying to rezone the property we live on, that is a lie. That is an insult. Because I clean up the road. You can call up the man who's in charge of the garbage. I even got a letter from you people about being a volunteer to clean up the road. So, and us being on the east side of Highway 99. We are not Spring Valley. We are not High Blues Creek. If we are in such a sensitive area that everybody says we are in, then why do we have wild waves? Why do we have Regency Woods in all those developments? If it is such a sensitive area like Warehouse, where the birds and the bees and everything? We have lived there. We have done everything. And I remember exactly when we became a city, made into the City of Federal Way. We came to a meeting here and we were told if you become part of the City of Federal Way, you will have more representation and you have more thing to say about where you live and the city council and the mayor. We hardly ever see a police car going down our road. Nobody cleans out the ditches. We have flooding down the road. We have water running out of, over our driveway. Where's the city then? We have to take care of ourselves. But when a young woman comes up here and says to me that we are money mongrels and we don't care about the environment, that is wrong. And there are a lot of people, and the majority always rules in everything. And I can tell you one thing, this was the most disappointing and insulting evening I have ever spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neither. Okay. All right. We've got a letter from Susan Peterson, and I'll have the city clerk read it. And while that letter's being handed down, Ms. Neither brings up a good topic. And Ms. Neither, as you become aware of instances in which either where increased patrols are necessary, I'll talk to the chief about that, or where you've got trash or debris in your area, I'll make sure, actually, I'm going to have Yarden come back there and give you his card. If you're aware of trash on the side of the road, or something that we... We'll help you, Ms. Neither. And we're going to give you Yarden's phone number and card. And you know what? We're going to help you next time there's an issue, okay, Ms. Neither? Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and read, let's read the letter by Susan Peterson, please.
Mayor Farrell and council members, as a member of the Quiet Skies Puget Sound and the Marine Hills Airplane Task Force Committee, I am encouraging the City of Federal Way to participate financially in a study that can be done by Dr. Mark Lee Witten on cancer clusters under the flight paths in and around Sea-Tac Airport. The man doing the study is Dr. Mark Lee Witter. He's in extensive education and has long written and studied the relationship between toxins and respiratory issues, and currently doing studies on jet fuels and cancer. He's been involved in cancer and pediatric medicine, and since 1998, he has worked in aviation, space, and environmental medicine and inhalation toxicology. He is studying acute respiratory distress syndromes and environmental toxins on lung functions, as well as the part toxins play in the development of cancers. His study would use leaf specimens near areas of cancer cluster sites in and around the major flight paths at Sea-Tac Airport. In addition, tree core samples from older trees in the study of tree rings will determine the difference between prop-driven and jet-engine-powered planes on humans and cancer. The estimate of this study is approximately $30,000 to $60,000, and will be shared by all cities with flight paths leading to and from Sea-Tac and South King County. We need all the affected cities under guide paths to support this study. Also, this study is completely different than the Ora Wall U of W Ultra Fine Particle Study in both science and timeline. I ask that Federal Way agree to contribute to this study as to increase in airplane traffic effects. Each and every citizen of the City of Federal Way, the contact person is Debbie Wagner. Sincerely, Susan Peterson.
Thank you very much. Yarden, will you please approach John Racing with that? And I know you already have forwarded that email that Ms. Peterson sent. And have that a question addressed to the Safe and Quiet Skies, excuse me, yeah, the Safe and Quiet Skies Task Force. Quiet and Healthy, yeah, exactly. Quiet and Healthy Skies Task Force. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. That's the, that's the end of the public comment in regard to the pink sheets. Is there anybody else who, oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 PM.
There's been a motion, a second to extend our business beyond 10:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I don't know what we would do if, yeah, exactly. All right. Okay. That's what we've got for citizen comment. Thank you, everybody. Great citizen comment, and appreciate, I appreciate all of that. Okay. Consent agenda. These items have already gone through council committee and can be passed all at once. I'll go ahead and read the items and I'll seek a motion. If council, if a council member wishes to pull an item for separate consideration, I'll ask that, I'll ask for that after I've read them. All right. Item A, minutes for the December 5, 2017 regular and special meetings. Do I sound like an auctioneer now, talking fast? I can go really fast. Okay. Item B, 2017 Asphalt Overlay Project Final Acceptance. Item C, Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2018 King County CFT Funds. Item D, Grant Funding for Transportation Improvement Projects, Authorization to Accept Grant Funding. Item E, Resolution, Setting a Public Hearing for the Amendment of the 2018 to '23 Transportation Improvement Plan to January 16, 2018. Item F, Retaining Vehicles and Equipment That Were Planned for Surplus. Before I seek a motion, council, is there a, are there any items that you would seek separate consideration or an item you'd want pulled? Okay. Hearing now, Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of items A through F on the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to approve items A through F. Is there any discussion? All right. Hearing now, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The matter's passed unanimously. City, thank you very much for your, for your presentation. Thank you. All right. Resolution, council business. Resolution Denying Six Specific Amendments to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map. Staff report first by Margaret Clark, Senior Planner, and then we'll go from there. We've got Robert Doc Hanson in tow as well. Or are you on the next one?
I'm on the next.
All right, all right. Thank you. Sorry. That's right. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the city council. I'm Margaret Clark with the Community Development Department. And this evening, I'll try to make this presentation very short because it's late and I'm freezing. It's really, really cold back there. So what I'll be doing is I'll be going over, making two presentations tonight. The first one is on the six site-specific requests, which the mayor is recommending denial on. And then later on, there'll be an ordinance recommending approval of three site-specific requests. So this year, the city worked on nine citizen-initiated requests for changes to comprehensive plan and zoning map. This was part of the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And there you can see it, one through nine. And it's probably very difficult to see, but you'll see there's a cluster along Milton Road. And that's the testimony on the com plan tonight that was all about those requests. So this, you can see a little better. They're called site-specific requests, number four through nine. All of these parcels are designated single-family medium-density residential with RS 35.0 zoning, which means if the parcels were to be subdivided, each lot would have to be at least 35,000 square feet. Site-specific requests four, six, seven, and nine are requesting single-family high-density residential with RS 7.2 zoning, which would be minimum lot size of 7,200 square feet. Two of the requests, five and eight, are requesting to go to what's called RS 5.0, which is one unit per 5,000 square feet. So they're not all consistent in what's been requested. So the policy question is should the city deny the six citizen-initiated requests for changes to the comprehensive plan and zoning map? And you've got four options. You can adopt the mayor's recommendation, as contained in the draft resolution. You can modify the mayor's recommendation, or not adopt the mayor's recommendation, or refer the amendments back to the planning commission for further proceedings. Very quickly, procedure summary. We started with the planning commission briefing in June of 2017. City council held what's called a public hearing on the selection process in July, and then we issued an environmental determination in October. And then there was a planning commission public hearing in October. LUTC met in December, and here we are tonight. So for background purposes, there's 26 parcels totaling approximately 55.2 acres with 18 different property owners in that area. As I mentioned, they're all designated RS 35.0. Request received from six property owners for higher density for approximately 27.58 acres. So when we went to the city council in July for the public hearing, the city council gave staff direction to contact other property owners in this area. We did notify them in September, gave them a deadline of September 29 to indicate interest. No one responded. So we went ahead and issued a secret determination and gave notice of the planning commission public hearing. The next week, three property owners indicated interest in joining in with the request. But we had already given public notice, and we were really hoping to have the process finished by the end of the year so we could start on the ones that we received in September. However, based on a requirement for a 60-day common period by the state, we're going into January. So what I'm going to do is just go over very briefly the public comments received. If you have questions, then you can ask me about the specific ones and I can respond. So there were both concerns about the development, so people were in opposition, and then, of course, the applicants were for it. So there was concerns about the impacts of South 376 Street and Milton Road South. It said Milton Road has a dangerous curve. Concerns about adequacy of utilities if the area was built out. Concerns about the impact on the environment if the area was built out. One of the property owners said redesignation to higher density would not comply with the comprehensive plans intend to keep Spring Valley in larger lots. And also, if approved, the resultant checkerboard pattern of lower and higher density would not make sense. Another citizen said that the environmental checklist that the city filled out was inadequate and didn't meet the Department of Ecology regulations for non-project actions. And then what, people that were in favor of it said that the applicants did not protest when Regency Woods and Bridley Lane to the east were built out. And then there will also be a demand for more housing as more people move to Federal Way and light real is extended in the city in the future. What I'd like to do right now is just go over how it meets the goals of the comprehensive plan, this request, King County, countywide planning policies, and Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2040. So first of all, the request for higher density is inconsistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. HG1, preserve and protect the quality of existing residential neighborhoods. And I'm just going to be very, very brief. LG1, create a attractive, welcoming, and functional built environment. And most of the reasons, the main reason that it doesn't meet these goals and policies is because it didn't come in as a cohesive development, it came in with gaps. So therefore, the lack of connectivity to similar adjacent zoning would result in a mix of higher and lower density development. Request for higher density is inconsistent with the goal of the King County countywide planning policies for growth to occur in a compact, center-focused pattern that uses land and infrastructure efficiently. Same reason, all parcels designated single-family medium-density residential in RS 35.0 did not apply for the rezone. Approval of any of these requests would result in checkerboard pattern of development of higher and lower density development, and would also result in conflict between existing lower-density residential uses and newly allowed higher-density residential uses. So the site-specific requests four through nine, the mayor recommends denial of all six. The planning commission concurred with the mayor, and LUTC concurred with the mayor's and planning commission's recommendation. So in summary, the reason for denial of all six requests is that if they were approved, they would result in a spot zone and checkerboard pattern, making the parcels incompatible with remaining parcels in this area, and they would therefore not be consistent with the comprehensive plan, the King County countywide planning policies, and Vision 2040. As I mentioned, planning commission recommended adoption of the mayor's recommendation, and LUTC recommended adoption of the mayor's recommendation. Staff does have one comment. If all of the parcels designate a single-family medium-density residential and single-family RS 35.0 were to apply in the future, or if the city were to initiate a legislative rezone for all properties in this area, the mayor would most likely recommend approval of requests for higher density. This would be determined upon further analysis. So it's just something that we, we don't have that information right now. And the proposed council motion is I move approval of the proposed resolution. And that's the end of my presentation.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Sepadossen?
Yeah, my question, I was going to ask your last slide was going to be my question. So...
This one?
No, the one before this. Yeah. So I was actually going to ask that question. So what would it take for the residents, or when can they resubmit?
Well, they've missed the deadline for, for next year because that was September 30. So they couldn't submit until September of 2018. The deadline is September 30, 2018.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Copeng?
Yeah, I think we made decision on LUTC based on the information that we had, which was that we basically did not have contiguous lots being moved forward for approval for the rezoning. What does the legislative process look like for the council if we were to look at that as an option to provide some accommodation for this type of development?
Well, the city council can introduce a comprehensive plan amendment at any time. They are not bound by that September 30 rule. And what you would do is you would, as a council, make a motion to initiate a rezone for all parcels in that area. And we would be looking for direction like that.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much, Margaret. Great job. All right. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
I want to talk a little more about moving to make a change to the zoning. I think that one of the issues that I see is we have a process, and this process, for an outsider, definitely is cumbersome, I think, at times. I mean, it's, the instructions are clear, but I think unless you're in land use or understand it, there's this process, I think we, we don't want to, I think, we need to create boundaries and procedures. But in this particular case, I think there was a lot of, there was some confusion on the part of the landowners looking at this. And I think that it makes sense for us to at least consider maybe tabling this tonight and coming back to this at a later date while going through a process of review by the planning commission and LUTC again, and then bringing this back to the council at a later date.
Counsel, any, thank you very much. Is that, is that a motion, or is it a suggestion for an opening of dialogue with the council?
Opening a dialogue.
Okay. Counsel, or is there anyone who'd like to address that point? Councilmember Sepadossen?
I think I do agree with Councilmember Copeng, and that was why I asked the question about the time zone and if people were to resubmit an application, what would that look like? So I would like to have a further conversation around this and see what that would look like, especially if council can... especially if council can enact a change or a rezon, or at least look at it further.
All right, deputy mayor Honda?
Thank you. Are there any property owners in the area that are against this?
That are against it? There are the residents of Regency Woods and Brittany Lane. They're not part of this RS 35, but they have expressed opposition to it. And one of the main reasons is that our comprehensive plan shows South 376th Street, which is just at the south boundary of Federal Way, actually extended into Regency Woods. So that's one of the reasons of their main concerns.
And that road extension, is that, what do you know about that? Because I've heard concerns about that from citizens.
Yeah, I'm going to look at Public Works Director Marwan. What I've heard Rick Perez say to us, that that road was in the King County comp plan, so it was always there, but I'm going to have Marwan respond to that.
As part of any planning process, we make sure that we have a connectivity for our roadway. So you do not have too many dead end for emergency vehicle, and the public are not able to get where they are going in multiple access. So the challenge in this particular case, it was in the King County comp plan, it is in the city comp plan to show that road being extended. And it is recommended from staff for that road to be extended. Now, definitely, the council could make a decision to dead-end that particular road, but we need to evaluate it from that perspective and see the impact associated with that. Because, again, we need to figure out how we're going to make sure that we have connectivity and traffic is able to move around that area.
All right. Councilmember Copeng?
Margaret, another question. And Suzanne Vargo brings this up, and I think it's a very important consideration, is the environmental aspects of any development there. Based on, you know, just a little bit of, you know, division here, I can see that 43, I mean, 3,500 or 35,000 square feet is, what, about six lots at 7,200? And, actually, about four lots.
Yeah, 7,200 is about four lots.
About four lots, and at 5,000, obviously, would be seven lots. That's, but that's, those are very small lots at five, you know, so there's, obviously, there's the element of some of the land not being developable. So it's not like we could automatically develop every square foot of any lot. There are environmental standards that we have in place as a city now that would prevent development in critical areas, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we feel like we have sufficient regulations in place to ensure that, or policies in place to ensure that we don't damage the environment in the process of developing this area more densely?
Yes, staff feels that we do have sufficient regulations, because back in 2015, the Growth Management Act required us to change our critical areas code to meet what's called best available science. So regardless of what's developed out here, they would have to stay out of the critical areas. If they wanted to encroach into buffers, they would have to go through a process with us and mitigate those impacts. So not, we have to protect our environment, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, deputy mayor Honda?
Thank you. If this were to go back to the planning commission, would they have to take something off their work plan to accommodate this?
No. Doc Hansen says no.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, for, we only got two site-specific requests that came in in September. So this year was a lot of them, but this would, we only have two so far this year, and we won't be accepting any more until September of 2018.
Okay, councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
I would make the motion that we table this issue and send it back to the planning commission.
Mike?
I would make a motion to table this issue for the time being and send this back to the planning commission for a review of possible ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and multiple seconds for the record to table this, send it back to the planning commission, and then, obviously, it will work its way, I would imagine, I would assume, that motion would assume that it would then go through committee and then back up. Councilmember, excuse me, Brian Davis?
If only.
Exactly.
So the motion to send it back to the commission, is this to send what is proposed tonight to the commission, or is there a direction from the council to look at it, the whole area legislatively, to do a zone change?
Thank you for requesting that clarification. I would amend my motion by saying it's specific for these lots that we're discussing as being denied.
Okay, and so if it is the proposal, what is the council's direction to the planning commission on reconsideration?
To look at rezoning the entire area in the most beneficial way, to balance both the environment and the need for additional housing in Federal Way.
May I ask for a clarification on that? So does that mean, then, that additional property owners wanted to join in, we would give them that opportunity?
If we're rezoning that entire area, then they wouldn't need to join in. It would be done legislatively through the council action, right?
If you chose to do it legislatively, yes. You could do it, but if you didn't, then we would need them to apply. And we were given direction from the council to notify everybody, but they just missed, three of them missed their deadline.
Understandable.
Okay, so there is a motion to send it back, Ryan, do you have all this?
No, I just, I wanted to clarify, we're talking about two different processes. So there's a legislative process that doesn't require, I mean, it's a normal public input, but it doesn't require the applications come from the sites themselves. That's just something the council has the authority to do whenever. And I think that's what I hear council say that they want us to look at.
Yeah, I think that I would like to bring the, send this back to the commission so they can discuss it and come up with a recommendation for both land use and the full council.
With the idea that we would use the council's legislative authority to rezone the entire area?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's clear.
Okay, all right.
You got all that, Stephanie?
Do you have that, Margaret?
Yes.
Okay, I want to, when we get back to the, if and when this gets to the planning commission, I want to make sure it's very clear, we're not, you know, that we don't lose time or ground on this, that it's very clear. Brian?
Yeah, and on that point of clarification, the, I guess, the consideration by the planning commission on this proposal tonight has gone through the process. I mean, they had several meetings, it went to LUTC. So to be clear, the direction is to ask them to look at maybe broadening the view of this area for a more comprehensive look at the zoning of the area, not specifically these properties that were presented tonight.
Based on the analysis that this was spot zoning and checkerboarding, and now we're seeing interest on the part of property owners to look at, basically, making the contiguous area for rezoning. I think that, you know, I think the landscape changed a little bit in this process.
Yes, but even with those new owners, it's still not going to be contiguous. There's still going to be some properties that don't want to come in, and so that's why I'm trying to get clarification, because we go back and we include those property owners that missed out on the deadline, we're still going to come back with a proposal that is essentially the same justification for denial tonight, that it's not contiguous and it's not orderly. But if there's direction to look at it legislatively for the whole area, I would submit that that makes more sense.
Yeah, I think that's the direction.
Okay, there's been a motion and multiple seconds. I think the entire council almost seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, it'll be sent back to the planning commission. Thank you very much, Margaret.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now moving on to item B, planning commission work program. As amended by the last item.
I was just going to say that, mayor, deputy mayor, council, thank you very much. I'll go through this as soon as I can. What I intended to do, you haven't looked at something for two years, which is a planning commission work program, and adopted a planning commission work program. For benefit of the new council members and those of you who weren't involved in it for two years, the planning commission program is designed to be adopted and approved so that we have a motion to go forward and tell the planning commission on things that you would like to have reviewed and worked upon. In this, I'm going to give you a brief background of what's happened in the last couple of years. Give you a brief background on some of the potential comprehensive plan amendments that have been suggested, and other potential new codes. Quickly, for two years, there was a work program that was before us, and a lot of them have been completed. There's the marijuana-related code, school impact fees, the comprehensive plan, which is being heard, and the second reading is on January 16th. We're amending the sign code, which was part of the work program before, and we're also in the process of looking at subdivision. We haven't, we've completed a number of things in SEPA, multiple family, and a number of items that have been requested by the council. We, this year, have only received one onsite specific request and one request for a code amendment. What I'm going to suggest and go into further is establishing a new docket procedure. What you've had in the past is a docket procedure which asks for a rezon since, and has been primarily for rezones and changes in the comprehensive plan. The major actions that we're looking at and accomplishing this year are the examination of the selection process. That's one of the things is suggested that actually be addressed the first part of the year. Right now, you have a hearing that selects the items to be heard within the docket process. That is not required by state law. It is required by our city code. It costs a lot of staff time and staff money. If that were eliminated, we could have a new docket process. Even though you'd be hearing more items, it would not entail a hearing that would involve a lot of staff time and a lot of city money. We're also evaluating the self-storage issues that were created by the moratorium. Last year, the council gave us direction to research housing issues. A lot of things that came up with the housing issues tonight. And, as I mentioned, looking at the establishment of the expanded docket procedure. Specific items, I won't go through each one of these. We're looking at SEPA. We have language within our codes that need to be clarified as to when something is counted as a lot, when it's not. Department of Commerce, we have something within our code that's not necessary, where we cannot notify Commerce until after the planning commission hears it. Our dockets can actually, we can notify proposals to the Department of Commerce long before the planning commission hears it. Changing to, looking at changing a sign code, notifying more people, changing the definition of substantial development in shorelines. Right now, it's at 5,000, a little over $5,000, and the law actually changed it to $7,000. Again, some other items. Your option tonight is to approve, modify, or deny the proposed work program. If this is, if you approve this and say go forth, it was like what I was stating before, we will start right away. Planning commission will be held January 16th, and I'll immediately start on the first item that I brought up in terms of the docket procedure. So you'd be looking at something in terms of the docket procedure around March. We'd be looking at something in terms of the housing towards the end of the year. We'd also be looking at a long docket procedure towards the end of the year, around November. And hopefully, we get the self-storage unit issued, taken care of before June. Now that we have one new thing to address, we will do that at the next meeting as well. So I'll attempt to accomplish both of those items in terms of directing the planning commission, indicating to them what alternatives they have and the issues that are before them, so that it can come back before you as soon as possible.
All right, council, any questions? Deputy mayor Honda?
Thank you. Where does public input come into the new docket procedure?
Public input would come in at the time that you made a decision that you wanted to do that. So it would be, we could make public notice, there's going to be a notice, the planning commission is open to the public, we would bring that out. So it's not something that we would do automatically. It would be going through a procedure. We have to change the code, so in essence, we would be notifying the public before it came to you. And so at the time that it came to you, the public would be notified that this was being changed. Because it is actually within your code that it has to be done this way.
All right, council, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Copeng?
I move approval of the proposed 2018 planning commission work program.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Doc. All right, now moving on to number seven, ordinances. First reading, Council Bill 732, ordinance 2017, amendments to the Federal Way, comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan map, and zoning map. Staff report from Margaret Clark, senior planner.
So as I mentioned earlier, right now, these are the requests for approval for comprehensive plan amendments. So the policy question, actually, there's a map that shows real quickly the three. There's the Puget Center property, which is at First and 312th. There is the Campbell property, which is between 373rd and 376th, west of 8th. And then there's the Mattis-Galberson, that's at the corner of 21st Avenue and Southwest 320th. So the policy question is should the city approve the three citizen-initiated requests for changes to the comprehensive plan and zoning map? And you've got the same options that I pointed out when we went over the resolution. Same procedural summary, they all came through the process at the same time, but now they have to be separated, because you approve by ordinance and you deny by resolution. So the first one, as I mentioned, is at the corner of South 312th and First. It's 4.03 acres of vacant land. The existing designation is neighborhood business, and they're asking it to go to single-family RS 7.2, minimum lot size, 7,200 square feet. The RS 7.2 zoning would be consistent with goals of the comprehensive plan, the King County countywide planning policies, and the Vision 2040, to focus growth in already urbanized areas. It would also be consistent with the comprehensive plan statement that the demand for and development of single-family housing is expected to continue for the foreseeable future, and it would be compatible and in scale with the existing neighborhood as there is RS 7.2 zoning to the north, to the east, and to the northwest across First Avenue. We received two comments from one citizen. He said BN zoning should be retained because traffic is already busy on South 312th Street, and we need to retain green space so close to the city center. Mayor recommends approval of the request. Planning commission recommends adoption of the mayor's recommendation, and the LUTC recommended adoption of the mayor's recommendation. So the second request, as I mentioned, is the Campbell request between 373rd and 376th. This is 8th. It's five acres right now, and there's an existing single-family use. It's designated suburban estates, which means it's a minimum lot size of five acres. They're asking to go to a single-family medium-density, minimum lot size of 35,000 square feet. All three of these requests are actually consistent with the goals of the comp plan, the King County countywide planning policies, and the Vision 2040. the King County countywide planning policies, and the Vision 2040 for the exact same reasons. Language in the COM plan that says that we can expect demand for development of single-family housing to continue for the foreseeable future, and development would be compatible and in scale with existing neighborhood, as there is RS 35.0 zoning to the east. We received two comments from one person, which she has, she's left, concerns about the ancient Indian burial ground and old Hylabos homestead and the Gethsemane cemetery, and future light rail to Tacoma may be extended through this area. We sent the SEPA checklist to all, to all of the tribes and also to Sound Transit. We got no comments from them. So the assumption is that there are no concerns on their part. Mayor recommends approval of request. Planning Commission recommends adoption of the mayor's recommendation, and L U T C recommends adoption of the mayor's recommendation. Last one, the Mattis, the Mattis-Gibbsson, on the southwest corner of South 328 and First, 21st Avenue Southwest, 2.38 acres vacant land, existing designation, professional office. They're asking it to go to RS 5.0, which means minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The PO zone is a, an office zone, but it allows very limited uses. This property has been zoned PO since incorporation. There, there used to be a little house on the corner that was a real estate use, and that burnt down. The other two parcels have never been, we've never gotten any requests for development. And as I mentioned before, they would, it would be consistent with the goals of the COM plan, King County countywide planning policies, and Vision 2040, also with the language in the COM plan about future development for, future demand for single-family continuing, and it would be compatible and in scale with the existing neighborhood, as there's, there's RS 7.2 zoning to the south, and there's multifamily to the east across 21st Avenue, and to the northeast across that intersection. A resident was concerned about the impacts, already busy roads, and the mayor recommends approval of the request, and the Planning Commission recommends adoption of the mayor's recommendation, L U T C recommends adoption of the mayor's recommendation. So the proposed council action on the agenda bill is I move forward approval of the ordinance to the January 16, 2018 City Council meeting for enactment. And that's the end of the presentation.
Council, are there any questions? All right, here are no questions. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 732, Ordinance 2017 Amendments to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, and Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to amendments to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, amending the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, and improving site-specific request number one, Puget Center property, site-specific request number two, Campbell, and site-specific number three, De Mattis-Gibberson property.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
I do. I move approval of the proposed, oh, I'm sorry, I moved for, moved to forward the proposed ordinance to the January 16, 2018 Council Meeting for Second Reading and Enactment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right, great job, everybody. Council reports. Councilmember Sephedosan.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to our council members, and I'm glad we're all sitting together. And this was a great meeting. I just want to, I'm glad we entered 2018 already, and I look forward for a great year for our council. So, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
I also want to thank our fellow council members, Deputy Mayor, Mayor staff, looking forward to serving the next four years and incorporating all community voices and values in my work and in our work. So I also want to make sure that everyone comes out to the Martin Luther King Day event on the 15th at the Performing Arts Center, looking forward to speaking, and also looking forward to representing the city at the event. And then finally, January 12th, I think that's Friday before MLK Day, there's going to be assemblies happening throughout the city. I think at every major high school, there's an assembly. So I definitely encourage folks to get out and, and go support.
Very good. All right, thank you. Councilmember Tran?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to be here, and I wanted to thank the mayor and members of the City Council who welcomed me to this council, and I will try my best to work with you all and serve the citizens of the city. I do have one message that I would like to send to the city staff, and that is, you are the most valuable resources that we have, and I'm here to support you. Thank you.
Here, here. Councilmember Copeng?
Wanted to again welcome council members Jesse Johnson, Juan Tran, and congratulate Councilmember Martin Moore on his reelection, and congratulate Deputy Mayor Susan Honda. You've worked hard for that. So, anyway, also wanted to say how, I think it's, you know, this elections, these elections are, I think, interesting. I know that at one point, I was considering deputy mayor as well, and it's a humbling process. And I think that in the end, you look at this, this process and realize that the bottom line is that the council needs to work well together. And I certainly look forward to working with the new deputy mayor and the rest of the council to really come up with the best policy solutions for ourselves as a city. There are going to be differences. There always will be. Nothing is, there, I mean, one of the things I've heard is that there's concern that we have too many unanimous decisions. And again, when we agree, we agree. That's good. But I think that we need to have room for, for a good dialogue that, that leads to productive discussions, where there may be some differences of opinion, but in the end, we agree to move forward based on a shared understanding of the issues that we discussed. So, anyway, I'm looking forward to a great 2018, serving with each one of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank once again the citizens for giving me another four years and, and being a voice on behalf of theirs. And I look forward to, you know, continuing to learn, work, and, and do the best job I possibly can as a council member. Also want to congratulate the, our new members of the council. I look forward to working with you and, and conversing. I think that's, that's going to be important. You know, Mr. Mayor, tonight, I've been struggling. I, I really have. And I will first start out by congratulating Susan Honda for becoming deputy mayor. What I'm about to say is not easy for me whatsoever. The reason why I say I do look forward to working with you is because I will put my feelings aside, and that's hard. And I will, I, I look forward to collaborating and making sure that the council can be what it can be. The reason why I didn't support you, and I'll be forthright and honest, is because I have a lot of concerns. Four years ago, you asked me for my vote for deputy mayor, and four years, you've had a, in my personal opinion, four years, you had an opportunity to show me that you're ready. And the reason, again, why I say I look forward to working with you is I hope, in that timeframe, that I can sit back and say, you know what? She's got it, she's ready, and I like what I'm saying. And so there are many challenges, and there's a lot of things that we need to work through. But, and being true to myself, I am always an optimistic individual. I'm always a positive person, you know that. And I will take some time to reflect on this and to process this. But in the end, I know that this is a democracy. We make votes, and we made a decision tonight. And while it's a very hard decision, you know, I will move forward, and I really am eager to see you, very eager, to see you work with all of the council members, build relationships with all of the council members, collaborate with all of the council members, and work together with all the council members. And I look forward to, again, collaborating and working with you. And so with that, I will say, congratulations. I know you worked hard for this, and I am eager, and I'm, I'm optimistic of what I hope to see coming out of your role. So, thank you.
Councilmember Duclou?
I'm not sure how to follow up on that. I congratulate you for your, being selected as deputy mayor. I have great faith that you will be a good leader, and I know you and the mayor will work together very well, and I think you'll work with all the council members here. And I know you'll make good appointments to the committees, because I know that you work hard for this city. You've done a lot of things out there, a lot of things that you don't even talk about or share with people. And I think you'll be a fine deputy mayor, and I look forward to closing out my term on this, on this council meeting with, for the next two years with you in this position. By the way, I'll remind everybody that right now, I'm the senior member here on the, on the council. I have more years on this council than anybody else, so treat me kindly. With that, I'm going to say I wish you all a good night and see you in the future.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I'm excited to have a temporary shelter location opening for our homeless families. Homelessness can happen to anyone, and every child deserves to have a safe and warm place to sleep. New Hope and Pastor Miller and his family have been supporting our homeless in our community for over 13 years, and this is just an extension of their service. So I thank them for their service and dedication to those who need the most help in our community. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Farrell, council members Johnson, Tran, and Moore on their elections. 2018 promises to be a busy and exciting year, and I look forward to working with all of our council members, our staff, and the mayor. Thank you very much. It's been a long night.
All right, congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right, council, great job where we got to get done sometime before 10:00 PM at some point. That's, that's a goal. You know, when, when...
We start at six.
All right, you know what? The, the issue about starting at six is, we could actually have some of our business done. You know, we only have council meetings once every other. We, I'm not sure we want to go to having a council member every week to counsel, so, and, and study sessions. Well, with that, everyone, great job. We are adjourned.